With the permission of the council, I'll call the committee, the council's committee to hold a meeting June 10th, 2013, to order with the clerk call the roll.
Ms. Ammons?
Present.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Thank you. As I've just learned from our city attorney today, that actually it's not a legal thing for us to do in addition to the agenda at this point, so without it, 48 hours?
No, you can do additions to the agenda.
Are there any?
But without that...
You can't, thank you. Any staff reports that we need to take into consideration? We have a staff report from the chief of police.
I want to take just a few seconds to introduce you to our newest police officer, Daniel Montanari, full-fledged police officer, I should clarify that. Daniel just completed his probationary period with the department, so I wanted to take a minute to put a face with a name, as I've tried to do with the other police officers. Dan came to us from Batavia, Illinois, started with the police department in March of 2012. If you recall, this is the time period where we were having a lot of controversy with PTI here locally, and with the incredibly hard work of the mayor, we were able to get PTI back, but Dan and one other police officer actually attended their 12-week basic police academy at the suburban, it's called SLEA, the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy located up in the Chicago area. He graduated from that 12-week academy, and after that, he returned here and started a vigorous field training program with our police officers. He was assigned to a variety of different shifts so that he had an opportunity to get an understanding of the policies and procedures that the Urbana Police Department implement as far as community policing and whatnot, and was also exposed to a variety of different shifts so that he could be exposed to a variety of different situations. He, after, he started with the field training officer by the name of Matt Bain, and there he worked with him for 16 days with 12-hour shifts. Then he shifted to two additional FTOs, Field Training Officers, for a total of 35 more 12-hour shifts, so that he could see a variety of different training opportunities from a variety of different trainers, three specifically. He then returned back to Dan, or to Matt Bain, for his final evaluation, where he spent five days working in kind of a review process, and then 10 days in what we call a shadow program. And the shadow program is where Matt actually wore civilian clothes. Dan was responsible for handling all the calls, and other than life safety issues, Matt wouldn't intervene at all, although he would evaluate him at the end of each night. Now, I'm happy to report that Dan went through his field training program with flying colors, and we didn't have any issues with him at all. After completing the field training program, he was still in a probationary status where he rotated through three different shifts, days, afternoons, and 7:00 P. to 7:00 A., where he was also exposed to the other police officers, working independently now, but was evaluated every other week by the on-duty street supervisors, the sergeants that were working. So tonight, I'm happy to report that as of May 29th, Dan has successfully completed his probationary period, and as a matter of tradition, the police department presents him with his official badge number 367, so he can take his probationary badge off, and we're going to present him with his real badge tonight. Daniel Montanari. That's it. Now, I told him he had to give a 15-minute speech with this, and he was petrified, so I'm going to release him back to duty, but thank you for, I just wanted to introduce...
Thank you, Chief Conley. Congratulations. We'll move on to item three, approval of the minutes. Turned off my old mic, thank you. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, I'll entertain a motion for A. or B. or A and B.
A and B, May 20th and May 28th, so moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any corrections, additions, or changes to those? All in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Anybody in opposition? Seeing none, minutes approved. Public input, we have two so far. If you'd like to speak during public participation, you can fill out a yellow gold slip and give it to the clerk, and she'll bring it up. First person is Bridget McGill. Did I get that right? Okay.
Oh, good evening, and I'd like to thank Mayor Pressing and all the alderpeople for giving me an opportunity for input this evening, and it was very nice to meet beforehand with my ward councilperson, Mr. Brown. I was wanting to speak because I received notification about the Race Street reconstruction project, and discovered that the street, the sidewalk in front of 900 South Race, which is where the CU Potter's Club is, that particular piece of sidewalk won't be, at this point in time, be able to be included in that project, and I just wanted to strongly suggest to the council that that intersection receives an immense amount of traffic. In 2009, we had an appraisal of that commercial building, and at that point in time, there were over 8,000 vehicles per day that were traveling at that precise intersection of Washington and Race Street. I think that it would be good, when there are monies available to the city, that this intersection receive a lot of priority, because there is so much pedestrian traffic, with three schools being so close in the vicinity, Lille, the middle school, and the high school, and so that is really my reason for coming here before you this evening.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your, oh, Charlie, I'm sorry.
Bridget, I did, I did pass on your concerns, and I also, you know, went by and looked at those, and I think it is sort of silly not to do the, you know, what is it, maybe 30, 40 feet of sidewalk from where the current project's going to end, I mean, and especially on the east side. Hopefully, we can get a city crew to do that real quickly, once the project is done. The other side is more, it's going to have some ADA issues and stuff, they may have to reslope some of that, that may be a little more complicated.
On the west side?
On the east side. The west side is, I'm sorry, west side is easy, the east side is a little more complicated.
That's correct.
But, but I think Bill and I will, we'll sort of keep an eye on that, and hopefully we can keep it moving along, because I think it, it makes sense to just have it all nicely done to, to, to Washington, as you've stated.
All right.
Maybe Mr. Jamison could explain why that section wasn't included?
The Race Street project is the reconstruction of the asphalt portion of the street from Michigan, and the intersection with north, and the intersection of Washington is concrete and extends south, so that particular reconstruction did not touch that corner. Craig Schonkweiler and I discussed it this morning, we have passed the comments that we received on to our operations staff. We have an ADA compliance plan, and we, when we get comments regarding particular ramps and things, they go to our operations staff, and then they're prioritized, we go out and look at them, assess the priority, and do those as we can with operations staff. So, the, we took those comments into consideration, passed that on to John Collins, our operations manager, and it's in the system. I'm not going to say it's going to be done next year, or tomorrow, or this year, but we're going, we will address those ramps in accordance with our ADA compliance plan.
The sidewalks as well?
If they're ADA, non-compliant ADA, we will address those also. It includes sidewalks and ramps, I'm sorry.
And so you're saying the street itself, the surface is okay? It's authority...
It is currently concrete to south of the Washington intersection, and we're only coming up to that concrete section with our new concrete street to the south. So, we didn't touch it, that's the reason it's not a part of this project, but taking the comments into consideration, we are putting it in the system, and it'll be prioritized along with, we've got lots of other ramps that aren't ADA compliant, we'll, we'll get to those as, as our operations staff can get to them. If there's a particular need for those ramps, as far as someone in a wheelchair needing access, we move that, that's a higher priority than one that might not have someone in a wheelchair or handicapped using that ramp.
So, just as part of that setting of priorities, would proximity to the school help raise it in priority?
That helps, yes.
And then also, one of the sidewalk, I mean, two sections of sidewalk actually are pretty heaved from tree roots, so it's sticking up a couple inches. For something like that, would you typically grind it?
It depends on the severity of the heaves. You can't grind too much, because you grind away all the sidewalks, so it just would depend on severity. If it's too much, we would remove the sidewalk and work with the roots, either raise a sidewalk to go over the roots, or, or trim some roots back. So, you know, all, all of those things go into the mix of setting the priorities of when we do the ramps and the sidewalks. And, and we rely on the citizens' input, a lot of times, we don't, you know, you don't see the sidewalks when you're driving down the street, so if we have citizens' input, we make sure we get that into the system.
Thank you.
And appreciate your, I appreciate your input, too.
Oh, you're welcome, Mr. Jacobson.
So, the, the only other thing that may or may not affect your priority, but this is one of the, this is designated as one of the 100 most significant buildings in Urbana.
One, one of the issues, as Mr. Smythe mentioned on that corner, we're going to have to redo the driveway approaches, which means, because you have, the driveways cross hope's too much, so when we're doing that corner, it's a major replacement of sidewalk through the driveways, the approaches then become steeper, do you flatten them out, lower the sidewalk, and then get up into the driveways, and it becomes, it's pretty complicated on that particular corner, making the improvements, because of that, because they've got quite, quite a large driveway entrance, and they drive across there to park, so.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comments.
Oh, you're welcome.
I'll call Jeff Yoki, I hope I said that correctly. Yaki?
I can speak now, or wait until you get to the bicycle masterclass?
Your preference?
I can wait.
Thank you. Reverend Troy A. Burks?
I believe I'll stay there.
At the time of the agenda? Thank you. Is there any more public participation at this time? Seeing none. We'll move to item number five, presentation from the Urbana Business Association. Please.
Good evening. I would like to introduce Cynthia Johnson. Cynthia is going to give you a little presentation on UBA's activities, and then following that presentation, I will do a brief staff report related to the annual agreement, and then we can, Cynthia can answer any questions related to her presentation, and then following my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the agreement. So, I'd like to turn it over to Cynthia.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay? Okay. The Urbana Business Association has experienced a number of exciting changes and new developments over the past year, starting with on April 8th, the UBA officially achieved green certification, green business certification through the Illinois Green Business Association, becoming only the third Urbana business to achieve, achieve this designation. By being in the forefront of this effort, we're able to help guide other businesses through the process, increasing the sustainability of the Urbana business community. Over the past year, membership with the UBA has seen a 20% growth, and we have facilitated 14 ribbon cuttings to date, just, just in the past 11 months. We have continued with the Blend of Urbana Membership Meetings, it's a morning event combining networking and education, and have added an evening component called Urbana Blender, a networking event. By alternating between the two concepts, we're providing our business community with options, and by alternating venues and expanding the educational topics, we're providing a variety and showcasing what our businesses have to offer. The UBA continued its success with the annual Urbana Sweet Corn Festival, which brought visitors from all over the state of Illinois and the surrounding states, filling many hotel rooms right here in Urbana. The increase in attendance is a direct response to the expanded marketing efforts put in place this past year. Rather than targeting just central Illinois in our marketing efforts, we expanded our reach to all areas of the state, and this marketing effort will continue again this year, as it has proved to be a successful tourism draw. We've been in contact with the Urbana Hotels to secure blocks of rooms for Sweet Corn Festival goers, and will be promoting these discounts through our website and social media. Our UBA staff recently met with the downtown, several downtown business owners to listen to their concerns regarding the Sweet Corn Festival, and as a result, will be implementing changes to ensure a more cohesive environment for all people involved. The Holiday Market presented another successful year with increased marketing, creating an awareness to many whom had not yet heard of this event. The vendors and shoppers alike voiced their desire for a winter market, so in response, we created the Middle Market. It's held in the middle of winter and spring, in the middle of Holiday Market and Market at the Square, and in the middle of Lincoln Square. And the first-ever Middle Market was how, took place on the third Saturday of the month in January, February, March, and April. It was well-received by the vendors and the shoppers, and it will be continued in 2014. Another new event created this past year was the first-ever Urbana Restaurant Week. Held in the first week of March, 11 locally-owned restaurants participated, and each providing price-fixed menus at $10, $20, and/or $30 over a seven-day period. Our marketing efforts with this event helped create a lot of buzz, and resulted in an increase in diners for the participating restaurants, and this event will continue in 2014. Future plans include the creation of a new downtown wine festival, Uncork Urbana. This event will be held in late spring, with more information to come as planning progresses. Over the past year, we have continued to support other local events, including Celebrate Summer at the Pines, Boneyard Arts Festival, Tour de CU Urbana Grand Prix Bike Race, Pygmalion Music Festival, International Beer Tasting and Chili Cook-Off, and the CU Folken Roots Festival. The UBA support of these events aids in promoting tourism in Urbana. The UBA serves as an active proponent of activities and programs related to tourism marketing and promotion. These activities include production and distribution of marketing materials, promoting Urbana through the use of internet and social media, researching new and innovative methods for marketing and promotion, working with event venues, and coordinating with special event promoters. This focus has continued through this past year with expanded efforts in all avenues. New brochures were created, providing an outlet for information about our various events and services provided by the UBA. Print media campaigns became more commonplace. Radio advertising campaigns were designed to create a constant reminder of the many services and entertainment opportunities available in Urbana. Here is one of several commercials heard this past year. I don't know if this has audio on it? Okay, well, I guess we'll skip that. To further expand our marketing efforts, we took advantage of opportunities to partner with the City of Urbana, Urbana Public Arts Program, and even the Urbana School District. These cooperative advertising efforts have allowed us to reach a broader audience within our budget constraints, and are a combination of print and radio advertisements. These efforts have included Illinois Tourism Week, the News Gazette Home Buyer's Guide, Illinois Marathon, and Eberfest. In May, we, the UBA partnered with the City of Urbana and several other organizations to launch the Why I Love Urbana campaign. This campaign utilizing social media will help to get people talking about all the great things Urbana has to offer. The UBA partnered with the Urbana Art Galleries to create a blade. It's a sign displayed in the corridor at Marketplace Mall, promoting downtown Urbana art. By financially contributing to this marketing effort, it became a more affordable advertising outlet for the participating galleries. A new cooperative, cooperative marketing venture with discounted advertising space is being launched with the News Gazette. By absorbing a portion of this cost, the shop-local option will be made available to UBA members, allowing them an affordable opportunity to purchase ad space in full color, reaching an increased audience. One of our largest marketing campaigns has been centered on a new smartphone application designed in partnership with the City of Urbana. Launched in May of this year, the Urbana app is a free application available on iPhone and Android, and serves as a hub for all things Urbana. A person can use this app to see listings of restaurants, nightlife, shopping, hotels, art galleries, and more. This app has been built to include all businesses in Urbana, with added features for those that are members of the UBA. In addition, a feature that will soon be available to all UBA members is the ability to use push notifications about specials and coupons. This tourism tool puts Urbana businesses in the palm, palm of the user's hands. Marketing efforts to promote the new app have begun, and include radio and print ads. And here, I would cue the commercial that's airing on the radios, but that's not working, so pretend. Increased promotional efforts are being made to create additional awareness of this tool through a variety of print media outlets. We have created window clings and countertop displays to aid businesses in the promotion of the Urbana app. Much of our promotional efforts are focused in the free avenues of advertising, namely social media. In July of last year, we began tracking the growth of the UBA followership. In the 11 months since that time, the UBA Facebook page has experienced a 36% increase in followers, the UBA 20%, or the UBA Twitter page, a 31% increase, and the UBA Pinterest page, an 89% increase. In addition, in the same time period, the UBA has established a presence on both LinkedIn and Instagram. The use of social media has become a commonplace, common marketing tool for many businesses, and it is the goal of the UBA to use this tool to the advantage of our members. Over a period of one month, the UBA averages 350 posts and tweets. Utilizing these social media tools allows us an additional outlet to promote our business members, their services, and events, and it also allows an avenue for, of communication with members of the community. For the upcoming contract year, the Urbana Business Association has not asked for an increase in funding. Our request is to continue the funding at the current level of $95,000, as has been in place for the past four years, in spite of inflation and other fluctuations of our economy. We hope that you recognize it's been a very busy and productive year for the UBA. The success of our efforts depends in large part on the work and support of countless volunteers, including our Board of Directors. I believe the momentum that began in 2004 has and will continue to build. We expect this coming year to produce even greater developments for the City of Urbana and our business community.
Mr. Jacobson?
So, one of the Urbana institutions that's very close to my heart, and that I also admire a lot, is the Celebration Company at the Station Theater. And I wonder if, I wonder if there are ways that you could utilize that, both as an attraction, but also, they're very talented and creative people. I think if you brainstormed with them, maybe you'd figure out some ways for them to, to help you in promotion, promotional videos, or, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
So, so I would, I would make that suggestion, that maybe that they're an underutilized resource.
That's, that's actually an excellent idea, and having a son that's heavily involved with Station Theater in performances and behind stage, it's kind of an obvious, you know, option for me, and I honestly hadn't thought of that in the past, but it's definitely something to, to take into consideration, and I've got the point person for that as well.
Any other council questions, Mr. Roberts, and then Ms. Marlin?
Yeah. Very much impressed by the achievements really over the last year, a couple of years of the UBA. It's grown stronger and more focused, and I think that's a great attribute for us, and I think the faith that we put in the UBA has proven to be strong and worthwhile, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
One of my pet projects would be the installation of interactive kiosks in the downtown, much as are seen in some other cities. I imagine that the budgetary aspect of acquiring one or two of those would be high, but I'm wondering if you've thought about that for the future, and whether there would be any funding sources that grant money could bring to achieve more of a techno, a techno-interactive digital, digital displays in our downtown.
You know, the, the kiosks has been a topic of conversation, multiple meetings, that we've been involved in with Public Works, and I know it's, it's been something that's been, you know, researched pretty heavily by the City of Urbana, specifically the Public Works Department. It's not something that, that we at the UBA have researched ourselves, but it's, you know, it's certainly something that we could take into consideration.
Ms. Marlin?
Thank you. First of all, I, I mentioned to you before, but I did want to say, I just love the look of the new website, and congratulations on all who made that possible. I think it really is classy, and if you guys haven't seen it lately, I'd urge you to go to the UBA website, it's really tremendous. I do have a couple of suggestions. One is, as I was looking through the budget, it occurred to me that all of the city's support isn't reflected in, in the budget, and specifically, and I had emailed you earlier today, is, one is that the City of Urbana provides office space for the UBA, which is valued at about $500 a month, so that's a $6,000 contribution that the city makes that is not reflected in this $95,000 total. Currently, we're also supplying three parking spaces rather than the one that is referred to in the agreement, so I don't know if we're officially sticking with one, or just doing three for now, but that's valued at about $1,620 total, so that would also be added to it. And then, I know that Public Works provides a great deal of support for the Sweet Corn Festival, and that service is not reflected there either, so I just think for, for transparency purposes, we should be very clear on everything that the city does for the UBA, and we get a lot of value out of the UBA, but I just think we need to be very clear what, what the city does. So, I would like to see the office, the parking space, Public Works, and I, I understand we're, we're now, you're now reimbursing the police for 100% of their services, so that's, that's already in your budget, but I'd just like to see all the, basically, in-kind contributions from the city reflected in your financial statement. That's one thing. And then I have one other issue, and that is, in attachment D., on, there's no page number, but it's actually the last two pages of the memo, it's the actual agreement with the city. Part A, the very last sentence, there's just a minor correction there. The police and security services provide this, provided by the city for the Sweet Corn Festival, will be charged to the UBA at 100% of cost. There's no... There's no longer a discount for that, according to Chief Connolly, so that's just a correction that should be made in the agreement. And then, Part B refers to downtown promotions, events, and arts coordination. And this leads me to an issue that has been raised with me from people and businesses in South Urbana for several years, and that's, you know, they, events like Celebration at the Pines, or the new car bash that we're having out on Phila Road, and some other events planned by businesses in other parts of town, are not eligible to receive any kind of financial help, even $100 or $200 or $300 from the UBA through this particular allocation, because it's reserved for downtown events, apparently. And the way the agreement is written now, it said the city will reimburse eligible expenses up to $4,500 related to downtown events and promotion of the arts, and it goes on and on. I would like us to consider opening that up, deleting the reference to downtown promotions in the underlying portion, and just say the city will reimburse eligible expenses up to $4,500 related to events and promotion of the arts, period. We go on to say eligible expenses include the Lincoln Square Village Holiday Market and Promotion of Arts, Culture, and Entertainment in Urbana, and leave it at that. And that way, I truly believe it would encourage businesses in other parts of town to maybe plan events, and it would kind of open up participation with UBA and maybe get other businesses interested in partnering with UBA on other things. So, something for the council to consider.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. With all the support the city's giving, it seems like we're supporting, I don't know, 50% of the budget beyond what you make from the Sweet Corn Festival. I hope that anytime you always feel like you still can be an independent advocate for business, because you are a business association, I hope if there's some disagreement between the city and the business association, you'd still feel comfortable talking to us about that. So, if that ever changes, and we need to add language to this to make sure you're comfortable with that, I'd like to know. The other thing I just wanted to mention is, I'm glad you kind of have a local focus, a local focus more, instead of just a tourism focus. I wanted to put some numbers on that, so I actually looked up the numbers of tourists we have every day in the form of people who come to Urbana to work, because we actually have 19,000 residents in Urbana who work, where we have 10,000 of the, or 9,000 of those working in someplace else, only 10,000 actually work in Urbana. But we have 32,000 people working in Urbana, so that means every day we have 22,000 tourists that are here working. I think if we can capture that money, they're basically the same as other tourists, except they aren't spending money in a hotel. So, I like the, I like the local angle you're adding to that, and I think just kind of keeping those numbers in mind helps us frame how we might take more advantage of that.
Okay. Ms. Evans has asked me to take the chair, so I can recognize her, Ms. Evans.
Thank you. This is my first time ever seeing this budget, so it's new to me. I'm trying to clarify, we are giving $95,000 to support the operations, and then we have these reimbursements that are à la carte. That does not include the $95,000.
That is the $95,000.
That is the $95,000. Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
It's very strict on what that $95,000 can be applied for.
That was the question. And the second one is, I had a question about your staffing demographics and inclusiveness in your staffing model, if you could talk about that a little bit?
Sure.
That's a question.
Oh, okay.
Is the staffing demographics of the UBA?
Yeah.
And how much work it does to promote minority business inclusion and minority staff members in your office?
Okay. Well, currently, we don't have, well, I guess it depends on how you define minority staff members.
People of color.
Okay. Currently, we do not have any minority staff members, then. And that's, I mean, that's just how things have shaken out. We've got three full-time staff members and one part-time staff member that only works just a couple hours a week. It's an all-female staff, and again, that's just how it's worked out. And really, you know, the hiring has been strictly based off of qualifications.
Just a comment to the council is that I would like to see us, as part of our work in the City of Urbana for inclusiveness, is any tax dollars that go to support organizations should be promoting inclusiveness in those organizations, because the tax dollars come from everybody in the City of Urbana.
Right.
And so, that should be a goal of the council, and I'm sure we'll talk about that more.
Yeah.
And I'll take the chair back. Thank you. Mr. Jacobson.
Can I, can I answer, can I make a comment on that, just to kind of address it a little bit further? Since I've been with the UBA, I have filled three positions, and in the search efforts in those positions, and of course, with our staff being so incredibly small, I believe, well, I mean, I don't know, you know, the race of the people that have applied for the positions, so it's kind of difficult, you know, I've based the interview process solely based on their experience and their education background, to ensure that I'm hiring somebody that's qualified for the position. So, when I'm calling people in for interviews, I have no idea, you know, I can guess what their gender may be, but I have no way of knowing what their race is. And, you know, I have absolutely no objection to hiring regardless of, you know, ethnic background. I just want to make sure that they have the qualifications for the position.
Now, you did comment the question about being, what is a minority? Do you have Hispanic employees?
No.
No, okay.
They're all, well, they're all white in appearance, but I know that one of our employees, you know, she looks white, but she's a very, very mixed ethnic background, so.
Yeah. Hey, I understand what you're saying, because that's part of my family, too.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We'll move to, I'm sorry, Tom, you did need to follow up. Thank you.
Sure. So, I will do a brief presentation and then offer to answer any questions. Related to the agreement, you do have before you a resolution approving an agreement for promotion and marketing services with the Urbana Business Association. Some of the multitude of services provided by the UBA have been included in your memo and also part of Cynthia's presentation. Other than date changes, this agreement is identical to last year's agreement. Just to go over some of the specifics of the types of financial support outlined in the agreement, that support includes things like staffing, Sweet Corn Festival, marketing, events and arts promotion in downtown. It also includes the purchase and the installation of banners and holiday decorations. Other provisions included in the agreement include the provision of office space to the UBA, and also, UBA's continued support of business backs the arts, and some other minor provisions. Also included in your packet was a UBA budget and a UBA business plan. Related to the fiscal impact, the total amount for the agreement, again, is $95,000, of which approximately $28,000 comes from the general fund, and the balance of that comes from TIF 1. Related to one of the questions earlier by Councilwoman Marlin, I can tell you the impetus behind the calling that item downtown promotion and events is that that's TIF-funded, so it is specifically for downtown. Now, there is a general fund contribution to the UBA, and so, we could change, we could modify, we would leave the amounts the same, but we would, the general fund contribution can pay for citywide things. TIF can only pay for items within that TIF district. And again, so that's the impetus why it was originally downtown, but we could work to balance that, so that we could take money from general fund to pay for those, promotion of those events. So, again, the level of contribution at $95,000 has been constant for approximately four years. Staff is recommending approval of the agreement, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions related specifically to the agreement.
Mr. Smythe.
Yeah, this question came up earlier in discussions with another council member. What's the justification for using TIF, period? You know, why wouldn't we just do this all out of the general fund and use the TIF money for more specific TIF-type expenditures?
Well, at one point, all of UBA was paid out of the Economic Development Reserve Fund. That fund has no recurring revenues, and so it wasn't sustainable to pay for UBA out of the ED Reserve Fund. So, then, the UBA was paid out of a combination of general fund and TIF. The justification for using TIF is, well, UBA Office is located in downtown, Sweet Corn Festival is located in downtown, a number of the events that UBA promotes are located in downtown. The Holiday Market is located in TIF, the Middle Market is located in TIF. So, UBA is a citywide organization. It certainly has and does, it does some of its business outside of the TIF, but a lot of its business and a lot of what it does is focused in TIF. And frankly, I think the thinking is, because a lot of these activities are TIF-eligible, we can help take the burden off of the general fund, so that the general fund can be used to fund other things. So, again, because these activities are TIF-eligible, why not use the TIF to leverage those funds?
Any other council comments or questions? CNN. I'll entertain a recommendation on this item.
I'd like to move approval of the UBA Agreement of Promotion and Marketing Services, Resolution 2013-06-027R.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the item, Ms. Marlin?
I'd like to offer an amendment to this motion. To the agreement, Item 2A, it will read, the last sentence in that paragraph will read, "In addition to up to $10,000 available in direct support, any police and or security services provided by the city for the Sweet Corn Festival will be charged to the UBA at 100% cost." And then, at Item B, I would like to amend it to read, "Promotion/Event/Arts Coordination. The city will reimburse eligible expenses up to $4,500 related to events and promotion of the arts," period. Eligible expenses include the Lincoln Square Village Holiday Market, Promotion of Arts, Culture and Entertainment in Urbana," period. Other events seeking financial assistance, and that continues as before.
Mr. Carino.
I, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, one second. Yes, she amended that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Madigan seconds. Now, we can have discussion on it. Ms. Carino.
I failed to address the 75% provision. Going back historically, the, there was a unofficial, not included in the agreement, provision for security services where it was, I think it was 50%, where the UBA covered 50% and the city contributed 50%. 2010 is actually the first time that the percentage actually appears in the agreement, and it was negotiated at 75%. And I think the practice has not been the 75%. But I guess what I'm saying is, I did, I talked to the chief earlier tonight, and I think, I think UBA has been paying 100%. That's not what the agreement has said for the last three years. If the city council wants to make that 100%, I'm sure we can work with UBA to make that happen. But I guess what I'm saying is, while the agreement has said 75%, that has not been the practice over the last couple of years.
Mr. Madigan.
Well, then, why wouldn't we just go ahead and codify the practice?
I just want to let you know the historical background.
Okay. But if they're paying 100%, then codifying that in the agreement is okay?
That is, that's fine with me if that's the will of council.
Fiscally okay, is what I mean.
Because UBA has been paying 100%, I assume that they have the ability to continue doing that.
Any other comments on the amendment? Mr. Smythe.
Yeah, most, Diane, could you go over your thinking a little bit more on the second part of that? I would have preferred two amendments, but I'm trying to think about it. I know we specifically want to support, you know, our own Urbana Public Arts Commission. I think we want to be supporting 40 North, 88 West. Why wouldn't we say these two organizations and others that may develop, or, you know, something that leaves those two in there in particular, but does open the door to additional collaborations, should they come forward?
That'd be, yeah, that would be all right. I just didn't want to restrict it, you know, to, I just wanted to leave it general.
So, we actually, you need to actually ask for friendly amendment to that, because she's amending it.
I want to think about it. I just want to toss this out and discuss it a little bit. Is there any reason to not expand beyond those two groups, you know, in the way Diane is saying?
I think the only danger is, the UBA doesn't have a process for determining which events to financially support and which events to not financially support. And so, if we were to open it up to too large a group, the UBA would have to come up with a process for determining if they are or are not going to support events.
I wouldn't mind hearing from the director on this as well, see how she thinks she could accommodate it.
You know, at this, you know, in the past, in my past year and a half here, we have helped support some events that are outside of the downtown area and just pulled it from our marketing budget, as opposed to the downtown promotion and events line item in our budget. So, it's something that we have done. I do feel like that we need to put some process in place for people to submit requests, because, you know, it's, we're getting more and more requests for this type of thing, so, you know, it's definitely something to consider and something that we should certainly put in place.
So, Cynthia, so it seems like you would be willing, so if we said, you know, 40 North and Urbana Public Arts and potentially others, you'd be able to work with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, well, then, then I would offer that as a friendly amendment, that wording.
Accepted.
Does she want to say something? Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Smythe, did you second Councilwoman Marlin's amendment?
Madigan did.
You have two choices, either to move, to amend the proposed amendment, or have the movement, who has already, and the second accept the change.
I think Diane has, so I don't know if my call.
Do you accept a friendly amendment? Yes, thank you. Thank you. All right. I'm going to ask for a vote on the amendment, as it's been presented by Alderperson Marlin. Clerk, would you please call the roll? Oh, just by voice? Okay, all in favor of the amendment as changed by Ms. Marlin, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? CNN. So, that will be moved to the city council, thank you. We got to go back to the main motion, right. Main motion is to move the budget to the city council. Is there any further discussion on that? CNN, no.
No, there is.
Yes, I'm sorry. Ms. Carino.
Sorry, I just want to mention one last thing related to the resolution itself. In discussion with the legal division today, we are going to add some recitals or whereas's to the resolution, and we will have that prepared for the packet. I just wanted to, they won't be substantive changes.
they, they won't be substantive changes. They will just lay out why exactly we're doing what we're doing in a whereas format. So, you'll see that.
Thank you. Ms. Marlin?
One other question. It occurs to me, since we're codifying practices here, are we now providing on a regular basis three parking spaces instead of one? And if so, we should change that language as well. And we could, we could add the value of, since the office space and parking is included in that one section, we could just refer to the value of that in that paragraph, rather than changing the budget itself, but at least it would be reflected somewhere in the agreement.
I think that can be a staff directive. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Marlin.
Can I, can I just get a, a little clarification? You said moving a budget. Do you mean budget or amendment?
The resolution, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Don't forget, you're, because it's a committee of the whole, you're moving to send this on for approval to the council.
Correct. We're back to the main motion at this point. So, we are going to be recommending to the city council Resolution Number 2013-06-27R, and I'll entertain, do we have a motion on the floor already?
It's been seconded.
It's been seconded.
I made it. Eric Jacobson seconded.
Seconded, thank you. All in favor of moving that resolution to city council for approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. That resolution passes. Item number seven, ordinance number 2013-06-05O, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 24. Ms. Mayor pressing.
Yeah. This is, we've gotten some new information since I wrote the memo on June 5th. So, some of the actual payments were over $5,000. So, if you want to change it from $4,500, that would be fine. But the main issue is that we're going to pay 100% for the removal and replacement cost to city streets, alleys, and sidewalks. And I think it should, one of the main issues that was brought up by the people in Ellis subdivision was that it was difficult for some people to come up with money upfront. And that needs to be clarified, that we could do in advance to the contractor that is chosen by the homeowner for half of the, the estimate, and then give an advance to the homeowner so that we wouldn't be paying the contractor. And we could get all this done in thirty days if the, if the contractor would be willing to accept half upfront as an advance, and then the remainder paid when the project is completed. And I also think that we need to make it more publicly understood that we have an additional program, which is up, we have a $60,000 budget for helping people with repairs to their homes. And some of these things have been done for the sewer repairs. So, we do need to make it more clear to the public that we have many ways of helping someone so that they're not going to get a bill that they can't possibly afford to pay.
I'm going to ask for public input at this time, and then ask for council comments after that. We'll call Reverend Troy A. Burks first.
Reverend Troy A. Burks, nine sixteen Fair Lawn Drive. Just for the record's sake, I believe I put in support of, and due to my attention, I had to rescind on that on the paper there. So, my comments are brief and hopefully concise in regards to this particular ordinance. I would be in agreements with option number three, the city repairs lateral with public R O W. That option, to me, seems the most feasible for the residents of that particular area, the Ellis subdivision. And I appreciate the mayor's comments in regards to being publicly open in regards to monies that can assist people in home repairs. So, I'm thankful for that. But I think that it would be prudent for the city to move with speed in regard to the residents in Ellis subdivision, and that option three should be a choice of the council, because I believe that will best address the residents' concerns and their needs. So, I thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Bishop King James Underwood wrote a note, and he wished for me to read at the time of this item. Said, "I do not wish to choose a committee, but ask that he has deep concerns about the outcome of this situation for tonight." And so, I have that on record. I would call, at this point, Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood.
Evelyn B. Underwood, thirteen zero nine West Tremont Street in Urbana. First of all, I would just like to say that I think Mrs. Carol Ammons, our ward three, person for her due diligence in assisting us in this endeavor. I am also, in talking to several people this week, about option three. They, they still would like to have option three. I told them what had happened last week, and this is what the people I spoke with, as well as the people who I talked with on the phone, and the people I talked with face to face. Option three is the least resolution that Dr. Ellis should accept as a fair solution to this sewer lateral concern, given the anomalies with our subdivision's infrastructure problems and other, I'm not going to talk about that one, so I'm going to take that out, because I must, I got additional information on something with the budget, and I haven't had an opportunity to talk to Mrs. Ammons about it from our area, plus go and try to find information. But there were information given to me that I need to check relating to this item, so I'm not going to talk about that. And other problems with possible legal implications. So, given that, option three is the least that we should accept as a resolution for this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Ms. Ethel Reed. Good evening.
To the council and mayor. My name is Ethel Reed, at thirteen oh seven West Tremont Street, Urbana, Illinois. I am for the sewer subdivision of Ellis Drive, speaking on that part. There was one part that was visited. I wondered if we could visit back to something that was brought up at last meeting, and some of us didn't get, didn't get the full understanding of it, I think. And another one is, one of the other thing is, if it's possibility that we could go to city doing their part, and we do our part of, from the set, from the sidewalk back to the part all along our property line, and the other part to the, the city would do from the sidewalk onto whatever it's, we have to visit for, you know, repairs and everything. But there was one amount on there that you brought up last meeting, if you possibly can. I'm visually impaired, I can't read the papers, but I don't know was that three or what it was, but it was something about like, the amount of monies that we were eligible for, and then there was available something else for those that was eligible for.
Ms. Reed, we actually will review that. We'll review that, what you're talking about in the next part of this discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have Ms. Shirley Hershey.
Well, I just think that we should pay our part, and the city should pay theirs. And the city don't want to pay theirs. They don't want to pay if we have to go across the street, which is not our fault. And I think that's, that's kind of small, not to want to do what, you know, you allowed somebody else to ruin the place that we live. I don't like that. And I just think that, you know, if you pay your part, we'll pay our part. We didn't come over here for charity. Came over here for, to get things done in the proper manner. And I just, I think you should do that. And I heard that one of your council members said that I was playing the race card. Well, I've been in the city of Urbana for fifty-one years, and I've never known you not to play the race card. So, I just thought I would bring that out, too. And I don't like people saying that about me when that's not true. All I want you to do is do what you're supposed to do.
Thank you, Ms. Hershey. The only other comment I have is at the time of the next item. So, if there are no other comments on this item, we'll move to council comments. Ms. Hershey. Mr. Roberts.
Okay. We've looked at this item for quite a while, and I think we are in agreement that we had gone to, our interest lies in being responsible and fixing any, any damage or excavation to the right of way concerning the streets, the pavement, and the sidewalks that the city would have to adjust or repair during, or sewer lateral, lateral repair. And I think we all agreed that the lateral line itself, from the home to the attached main, main sewer line in the street or in the parkway, belongs to the resident to whom, to whose house it is affixed. I think the only question that might remain is, to what degree we will allow repair work to be done to cover those expenses that the city is discussing. Currently, the status would be $4,500 per, as a, as a ceiling for repair work. The mayor is offering that it could indeed be higher. So, I guess what I would suggest is that we have a discussion about what cap that would be, and I could propose that it might be $1,000 more, so that that repair would be $5,500, and that the city would pay fully for any repair up to that amount to replace the sidewalk or the street that which the city is responsible for.
I intend to support the mayor's proposal, which is the maximum...
We're not hearing you.
I'm sorry. I'm intending to support the mayor's proposal, which is the maximum of $4,500, up to 100% of the cost. We can do this without further increasing the sewer benefit tax. We have about $42,000 in the program. When this is used up, we're told, or if this is used up, and if there are more requests for reimbursement, we can, this year, go into the sanitary sewer utility fund reserves and continue to assist people. So, I think that's a very good compromise. This proposal also removes language that was troubling to people, the language that referred to the fact that you'd only be eligible for reimbursement one time. That has now been removed from the resolution. So, that's no longer there, as well as some reference to having to make an appropriation. So, so the troubling language has been removed. I think this is a, a good response to a program, and it's within what we can afford. I would request though, that if the $42,000 in the program is used up, I would like council to be informed when that happens, just so we know where we stand.
Thank you. Mr. Smythe?
It's my understanding that we could probably do $5,000 and keep it within budget of the $42,000 roughly for this year. And then, we can look at it again next year if we really go over in a significant way. But, but $5,000 covers almost every one of the expenses we've seen in the past, just a few kicked over, a little bit over that. So, I've spoken with the mayor, so I would, I would suggest we use $5,000 as that number, and with all the other changes that are, that are listed in here. So, I'll actually move that we send this to coun, and I have a, I make a motion here now, but I, I want to bring staff up and ask for another request as well. So, I'd like to move this to council with a recommendation for approval, using a $5,000 amount in, in, in Section 2449, number two.
Mr. Smythe makes a move.
Yeah, I'll second.
Movement second. Mr. Smythe.
And then, before we, we finish this off, I'd like to see if Brad Bennett could answer a couple of quick questions. One of the issues that has kept coming up here for the Ellis subdivision is that it was somehow built differently from other parts of the city. And I don't, I know that you did some presentations on pipe materials. It's been a while. Did, do we have any records of actually what kind of sewer lateral materials were used in building the Ellis subdivision? Have you done some video up into the pipe? Could you review that for us, please?
Yeah, we've done quite a bit of televising up in that area. We've done the cure and place sewer lining of the public sewers. A lot of those were built with what we call ribbed concrete sanitary sewer pipe. It was an unreinforced concrete pipe. But that was mostly the public sewers that were built with that material, and that material was used in other parts of Urbana, particularly southeast Urbana, a lot of the concrete sewer pipe. But it's, it's mattered throughout. It was kind of a material that was popular back in the, the 50s and 60s, as far as a sewer material. But all the laterals that we've seen, you know, from our televising efforts up in that subdivision have been clay, which is consistent with about, probably about 95% of the laterals in the rest of Urbana. So, but we haven't seen anything from our television inspections that, you know, would indicate any unusual materials or, you know, poor installation practices. The other thing is, if you remember back from the presentation we made, we, we kind of keep track in the GIS of where we get, you know, complaints in as far as, you know, sewer backups or drainage complaints. And, you know, when you look at what's been logged in, and I'm not saying that, you know, every single backup has been logged in, we count on people calling in to get those. But the ones that we have received, when you plot them out, it doesn't appear any different than any other part of the city.
Any other council comments? Ms. Brown?
While Brad's here, I, I know some, we noticed, actually, on the capital improvement plan, that the other east-west streets in the Ellis subdivision had been relined, or they, they had the blue line that meant something. But Ellis Street itself didn't. So, could you explain what the difference is there, and if there's plans to look at Ellis, or if it just didn't need it when you looked, or what that was?
Well, we prioritize our rehab dollars. So, what we do is, we, we go in and inspect the pipes, and based on the condition of the pipes, we determine whether we need to rehab them or not. What happened on the other streets were, it was that ribbed concrete sanitary sewer pipe, and they had seen a significant amount of deterioration. So, you know, we did prioritize that and spend the money doing the cure and place lining. You know, on the other street, on Ellis Street, the condition of the sewers wasn't bad enough at this time to make it a priority where we'd have to line. We'll, we'll continue to monitor that, and if we see any deterioration at that time, then we'll, you know, do a rehab method on it and bring it up. But we, we do prioritize how we spend our rehab dollars.
Mr. Madigan. Mr. Madigan.
Brad, how many neighborhoods have this type of lateral schematic where the lateral crosses the public right-of-way to the main? And I'm sorry, I'm kind of new to this issue, so you've probably asked and answered this several times.
We calculated about sixty-six percent of the properties in Urbana have the lateral located out in the public right-of-way. So, you know, about two-thirds of the properties, about a third of them have them in the backyard. I'll point out, you know, we don't like them in the backyard anymore. That was a practice they did at one time, but, you know, we've learned that that was a, kind of a maintenance nightmare as far as getting in there and cleaning and televising the sewers later on. So all of the new sewers generally constructed in the, in the right-of-way.
So of all the neighborhoods that do have the front yard sewer laterals, are there any that have two mains, one running down each side of the street?
There are some areas, and actually it's in the older areas, the State Street area where you'll see that. Generally nowadays, because the developer has to pay the cost of putting in the sewer pipes, so like in the new subdivisions like Stone Creek Boulevard, that cost of the public sewer main is actually included in the lot price. So in most places, it's just not economically feasible to run it on both sides of the street. I'll point out, in a lot of the new subdivisions, you'll see the same thing you do, you know, up in the Dr. Ellis where, you know, the sewer is located on one side of the street and the mains run across it. Of course, in the newer subdivision, you know, they have the advantage of having PVC pipe. So, you know, they didn't have to use the clay. But I'll point back out in the nineteen-seventies, I mean PVC pipe wasn't an option for laterals. It wasn't a permitted material because it was a relatively new material. You know, so, you know, it was built consistent with what the standards were at the time.
Right. So basically what happens is the developer builds the property or builds the development, the lot prices and therefore the prices of the homes are more economically feasible for folks because there isn't a double main and a lot more infrastructure. Okay, then if, if the, if the main is on one side, which is common, what is the legal instrument between the developer and the city whereby that lateral becomes city property? Is there one?
Well, the lateral never becomes city property. The public sewer, which runs down the street that all the property's pipes connect into, that becomes the ownership of the city once we accept it. They have to go through some testing criterias. They have to air pressure test it. They have to have a video inspection.
The main.
Yes, the, the public sewer.
But never in any legal document between a developer and the city? Is there any turning over of the laterals to the, to the public?
No, the city never accepts ownership of the laterals.
Ms. Jacobson.
Yeah, I think one of the things that's, that's got people tied up in knots about this is that we have public pipe running under private property and private pipe running under public property. But one of the things that I'm really curious, and I intend to vote for this. I think this is, is reasonable. I was in favor of option three. I was even in favor of addition, of levying the, you know, in addition to the sewer tax in order to pay for that. But, you know, I, I think we've had, we discussed this very thoroughly. And I don't think it's, I'm not going to, and I, and I think, I think we're, I think it's clear that this is, this is where this is coming out. But I do have a question. When people buy properties, are they apprised of where the main is? Because in a certain sense, it, it would be more desirable to have the main under your property because then your, your potential costs for cleaning out your lateral are, are lower. And I wonder if that should be something that is divulged to buyers because it's a very material, it's a material, I think, factor in, you know, the price of the property.
I, you're correct. I don't believe that's part of any real estate transaction. I, I will point out, and I've actually had some people take advantage of, of it. We, if someone wants to call the city and know which side of the street the sewer is on, we're glad to share that information. Another thing I'll, I'll also point out, too, is as part of the home inspection process that usually goes through with the real estate, usually they don't check the condition of the sanitary lateral. So, I mean, we've run into cases where someone has literally closed on a house and had to, you know, put down several thousand dollars because of a sewer repair because, you know, their toilets wouldn't work once they moved in, so.
So as we've looked at our place since nineteen seventy-one and I have to say that I, to this day,
Carol wants to make a comment.
I, I do want to just ask for one thing from Brad, just for clarification before I make my final comments on this issue. I know we had, I came on when we had option one, two, three, four, five, you know, all of these options in front of us, which confuses a little bit of the discussion. What's being proposed now seems to me to be very, very, very similar to option three with the caveat of the expense cost. Can you tell me what the difference would be, in your opinion, between option three and what's being proposed currently?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Option two, the homeowner goes ahead and contracts with a sewer excavator or a plumber to make the repair and then the city reimburses them for the cost of it. Whereas for option three, the city would actually go ahead and, and make the repair. We have a contractor that would come in and do it. So, you know, kind of the difference between the two is in number two, the resident's still responsible for, you know, coming up with a contract with a sewer excavator or plumber and making that repair and we just reimburse them for those pavement removal and replacement costs. Option three, the city would actually go in and make the repair. The resident really wouldn't have anything to do, you know, with the actual repair.
Okay. That, that, that's helpful. Okay, so I want to address a couple of things that was said. When I first came on this council, this was a very hard issue for me to catch up on. But I was one of those residents of Urbana who bought a house and then within a very short period of time had a lateral issue in my backyard, of which IA didn't know about the city and I probably would have qualified at that time because I wasn't working to get the emergency assistance as an Urbana resident. Didn't know about it. So we ended up having to get a line of credit from our home in order to do the repair. Big cost. Now we know about that, right? And then the other thing is that the issue of across the street, which I completely understand the resident issue and if I was in a situation, I would completely understand it as well, that the lateral is clear across the street and therefore it costs me a whole heck of a lot more than it does for the person who's on the same side of the street. So I understand that issue as well. I think there's something long-term that would have to be addressed in the unlikely event that a city decided to take over the laterals. I did look at the lateral issue only. If a city took over those laterals, that would be a humongous expense, meaning across the city. So that's, that's a huge fiscal problem that some developer, in this case, got away with when they built this subdivision and so many others in the cities to save them costs and shook it ultimately on the homeowner who would ultimately purchase that house. Unfortunate trend of activities. The other thing is that tonight's resolution, I think, gets us as close as we possibly can without doing additional research, in particular, on Dr. Ellis subdivision. That may be a long-term project that Brad could help with at some point. But tonight's responsibility of the council to support the reimbursement program to the five thousand dollars. We've only found two reimbursements over multi-year period. There was a multi-year period that exceeded five thousand dollars. And they exceeded by a very small amount. And so to increase that tonight would almost guarantee that any person who had this issue would not have many expenses whatsoever in the ROW. That's the biggest issue, is that street, that sidewalk repair is humongous. That five thousand dollars out of all of those reimbursements did not exceed that cost but in two cases, which I think the city should look at those if they exceed. Long-term, the issue needs to be studied more, in particular, Dr. Ellis. I think Dr. Ellis is going to support some continued work on this issue. But the council, I, I am going to ask that we forward this increase at the five thousand dollar level to the council for approval.
You're the chair.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Well, CNN, I entered, we have a motion already on the floor. Thank you. All right. Well, we'll entertain the vote at this point. All in favor of moving, I don't know what this ordinance number is. Ordinance number twenty thirteen dash oh six dash zero five zero to council for approval. I'm sorry.
You have an amendment to increase.
Oh, we do have an amendment. I'm sorry.
The amount from forty-five to five.
To five.
So you have to vote on.
Is, is that legitimate?
You've amended what's, the original motion to approve. The ordinance is drafted. I think there's that motion's on the floor.
No, because, because you have to vote on what's on the agenda and then you have to amend it. Or you have to, you have to amend it.
But again, whoever made the motion and whoever seconded accepts the five thousand dollar amendment, then you've obviated the need for the second, for its vote.
I made the motion with five thousand in place as the original motion.
And I seconded.
He did.
Yes, yeah. Yes. Yeah, I did that intentionally, so we wouldn't have to make amendment.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a voice vote in support of Mr. Smythe's motion at this time. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, CNN, thank you. So the next item is to ordinance number twenty thirteen dash oh six dash oh five one and ordinance repealing ordinance number twenty thirteen dash oh two dash oh sixteen. I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make the motion to repeal ordinance two thousand thirteen oh two.
Oh sixteen and send this to council.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Jacobson. Any discussion on this repeal? CNN, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In the opposition? Thank you. At this time, I will call the only public participant for the next item, which is Jeff Yaki. Thank you, Jeff.
Hello, I'm Jeff Yaki. I live at three oh four West Washington. I was at your last council meeting when you discussed the Bike Master Plan update and would just like to say I appreciated your thoughtful questions and all the interaction about that. I thought you guys were right, right on the mark. I just have a couple of thoughts to add and I sort of speak on behalf of Champaign County Bikes, an education and advocacy organization. I'm one of the leaders of that, that group. The Bicycle Master Plan update requires funding and that, that's one of the points you brought up. So that's money spent. But I would say that this update is a multiplier. That was kind of brought up, that the money we spent will turn into, every dollar spent will turn into two, five, ten dollars or more in the future. Just a few examples. Having a strong current Bicycle Master Plan allows other people to write strong applications for grants and other sources of national, state and local funding opportunities. An example of that would be the Safe Routes to School Project. Here in the community, they were able to apply for a sizable programming grant and then through their work and additional applications, secured funding for bike infrastructure that will be seen going in place in our community this year. And that is a, that's an example. On a personal level, a strong master plan allows for strategic and thoughtful improvements in the bicycle infrastructure we have. You can look, take a big picture, see where your problem areas are and address that. And once that's done, it makes it easier for people in different parts of the city to traverse the city and get to where they're going. Particularly since the U of I is one of our bigger employers and destinations. If it makes it easy to be a commuter, you save a lot of personal money that gets reallocated for other expenses. I think, I tried to look, the U of I, I think, took down the, the fees for a parking permit on campus. I couldn't find it visible without having to log in now. But I think it's pretty safe to say that parking on campus by the permit and your use of gas and automobile maintenance is over a thousand dollars a year. So that's sizable. Another user would be kids. Anytime a kid can ride a bicycle to a school, they reduce congestion around that school, the size of the roads, the backups, those kind of things. That's a good thing. In addition, if a kid gets driven to school, then you've got a chauffeur who takes the time to do that and has the expense. My kids, to get to school, have to go across Lincoln Avenue, Green Street and Springfield Avenue. And because of bicycle infrastructure that's been put in place, they can safely do that at age forty-five and all the commuter traffic that's going on as they get to school. So appreciate that. That's a nice return for everybody that's, that has kids in school. And it does lots of other good things for the kids. More riders, more bicycle riders means more bike-related businesses. And in Urbana alone, we have six specific bicycle-related businesses. And so that generates income. More riders, we'll probably see more of that coming and I know there are conversations about that. Additionally, now is a great time to support bicycle-related projects and activities. We're celebrating with Champaign now their recent achievement of becoming a bicycle-friendly community bronze award winner. That was recent. That shows significant progress there and that's exciting. Within a year, Urbana will be applying for reassessment of their bicycle-friendly status. You have to every so often redo that to see if you're maintaining or not. It's a, it's a dynamic thing. Many of us think that not only are we well-suited for a silver award this time, we think we are within grasp of a gold award. And the activities we put on between now and then will really catch the eyes of the evaluators and having an updated proactive.
You have one minute, Mr. Yaki.
Okay. Plan would be a huge asset there. And I think if, if you're an employee, if you're a potential employee of the U of I and moving to this community and you see that Urbana is a gold community, bicycle-friendly gold community, you're going to want to live here. Additionally, the U of I is also doing a number of great things in terms of their Bicycle Master Plan, infrastructure and funding. They are our big destination for most commuters. But on the same way, anybody, if, if we make it easy to get to the U of I, we also make it easy for everybody at the U of I to come back to downtown Urbana. That's huge. Last couple of thoughts. I have not drank the bicycle Kool-Aid. I'm a realist. This won't solve all the issues in the world or in Urbana. But I think increasing bicycle ridership makes a contributing contribution to everything going on in our community. Thank you very much for this time.
Thank you so much. All right. We'll entertain an ordinance number twenty thirteen oh five. I, I'd like to move the ordinance, get it as motion and a second and then comments. Of the bike? I'm sorry. What I'm looking at on the agenda is an ordinance that we can move and second and then discuss, so.
Yeah, we usually have staff presentation before we do the motion. Although we don't have.
I think, I'm going to say this because I'm the chair of this particular meeting. I'm going to ask for this ordinance to be moved and second and then we'll discuss it. So if there's a motion to move and second.
I move.
Thank you. Is there a second to Ms. Marlin's motion?
I second.
Thank you so much. I'll turn it over and I don't know your name, so please.
My name is Rebecca Byrd.
Ms. Byrd.
I'm a planner in the, in community development here.
Thank you so much.
Nice to meet you, the new city council members. So this is discussing our Bicycle Master Plan update. Our Bicycle Master Plan was adopted in two thousand eight and written largely in two thousand seven. Part of the reason, most of the reasons that we do bicycle planning for health, environmental sustainability, for the livability of our community, which Mr. Yaki was just discussing in, if we're a gold bicycle-friendly community, people would really want to move to Urbana. That's all part of the livability here. And also the safety of our streets for bicyclists and pedestrians. I know at the last meeting, you discussed the, the proposed Bicycle Master Plan and there were some questions raised and I've written a memorandum here for you hoping to address those, those issues that were raised. Part of the reason that we are proposing a comprehensive update and not just a small update to an adopted plan is that bicycle planning and infrastructure is really a changing field and a lot of the practices that were, that were best practices in two thousand seven when our current plan was written are somewhat out of date and there are a lot of new practices that we need to consider and look at. Things such as sharrows, the shared lane markings in the streets, those were not accepted practices back in two thousand seven and they are now. Also things like neighborhood greenways, also known as bicycle boulevards, were not, were not accepted practices and they are today. And we want to look at those and see whether or not any of those new types of infrastructure are appropriate for our community. So the policy basis for the plan update begins really with the 2005 Comprehensive Plan. Many of the goals in the Comprehensive Plan do address having a multimodal community, and bicycle, a bicycle network is part of that multimodalism. Also, in 2007, a city council goal to get Urbana bicycling. In 2008, the Bicycle Master Plan did have a provision that it would be updated every five years. And in 2011, the city adopted a complete streets policy, which commits the city to using complete streets concepts in designing and constructing our roadways, and bicycle, the bicycle network is a part of that. So the specific issues that were raised, I know that city council members wanted to see the scope of services, which was attached to your memo, and an outline of it is included in the memo. The, also attached is the PABs survey, which is the pedestrian and bicycling survey, which the Regional Planning Commission is proposing to use as part of this update. The survey would provide the city with baseline data in order to better plan for our bicycling network in Urbana. Another issue that was raised was the issue of reaching low-income neighborhoods specifically, and that, at the staff level, when we were negotiating with the Regional Planning Commission, we did ask that they specifically address our low-income neighborhoods and how we were proposing to get their input. In our public meetings for the current plan, we documented very well what people's needs were in most of our neighborhoods, but not all of them, and specifically the low-income neighborhoods, I think, were not as well documented. We didn't have as much participation. And so the Regional Planning Commission did specifically write into the scope of services addressing that low-income population and those neighborhoods, and you can see that in tasks four, five, and six point three. And then several specific locations for holding public meetings, in the Learman neighborhood at King School, and then another meeting for the Latino-Latina population. An additional, I know another issue that was raised about the Comprehensive Update was, why would, why do we need the Regional Planning Commission to act as a consultant on this, and why can't we just have staff do this update? Staff, it will certainly be working with the Regional Planning Commission on this. If we were to undertake it on our own, it would mean that other planning and engineering projects would, would be impacted due to the amount of staff time that it would take. Also, the Regional Planning Commission, having done the current plan, has expertise in our local bicycling network and needs. And also, they are doing a master plan for the Urbana Park District for their trail, bicycle trail network this summer and over the next, course of the next year. And they're also doing a long-range transportation plan, which they're able to, the three plans, if they're doing them simultaneously, they're able to use some of the same public outreach tools and locations, so that they're able to make, to reach much deeper into the community. An example of that is that the Park District has a very large list of users, and email and mailing list of users, that the Regional Planning Commission is hoping to use to mail out the survey to get more, to get a greater response. They're also planning to have the survey available at public events that they're going to attend as part of the long-range transportation plan update. They'll be at the Sweet Corn Festival, at some of the Urbana Park District's neighborhood nights, and that, those are a great way to get a higher response in, from the survey. The, another question raised was about GIS analysis of trip origins and destinations. Would they be included? In the survey, which you have a copy of, the draft survey, it does ask a question about the nearest intersection, and that would be available both online and in a paper copy, so that would get des, origins, trip origins, or, not actually, I guess, trip origins, but the location of the residence of the respondent. And this evening, we do have Rita Black from the RPC. She is their Planning and Community Development Director and would be project managing the update. She's here this evening and can answer any questions that, if you have specifically of them. And then, on the fiscal impact, as you know, the Bicycle Master Plan update would cost $38,000, which has been allocated in the capital improvement plan, just a line item was not designated. So it would not divert funds from other planned projects. And one thing to note is that the city has received eight grants totaling $2,308,478 since the adoption of the 2008 Bicycle Master Plan, which have helped fund bicycle facilities. So having such a comprehensive and thorough plan has helped us leverage, you know, $2.3 million, which is significant. And staff does anticipate applying in future for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program grants for further bicycle facilities, and having a comprehensive update to the plan would assist in that. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or have Rita Black come up and answer any questions that you have of her as well?
Ms. Rita, you can, you can join us at the table in case they have questions for you. And I'll call on Councilmember Smythe.
Good, because my question is for Rita, maybe Gabe, I don't know. Who's, who's responsible for the survey? Who's doing the survey? Rita or Gabe?
Both.
Both of you are. Okay, so just, okay, so I like the idea that you can have a web, a web component to this that people can go do too. And you've calculated the, the numbers that you need to get a significant response. Do you, do you plan to do any, any sub-sampling in the sense that getting it from different, say, census tracts or by, by zip code extension, you know, so that you get a balance across the whole city?
Yes. The idea is with the paper survey, we'll do a random sample, and with that, we'll mail out the surveys to those households. But our experience in the past have been that when we do the surveys and we send the paper surveys, we don't get a really good response. That's why we are complementing the survey that we'll be sending via paper, via the email, via mail, regular mail, with the web base, that we can collect more surveys. The more that we have, the better information that we'll have. And also distributing the surveys when we have the public outreach doing, for the LRT PR, for the Transplan, distributing the survey to the people attending those meetings and collecting that information. There will be different kind of ways of getting that information. Once we get the information, because there is an item where we ask for the nearest intersection where they live, then we'll be mapping that in GIS, that we'll have an idea where the people live that is providing the information regarding their bikes or-
Okay, so you'll be able to check your distribution.
Yes.
If you don't have a good distribution, what's the plan B to get?
Usually what we do, if we don't get a good distribution at the first attempt, what we do is we go to those neighborhoods, and that's why we have Learman, we have the King School neighborhood, and we'll reach out to them. We have contacts, Gabe is part of the Learman Neighborhood Association, and we have worked with the King School principal and the school, that we can work with them to get more surveys back.
And then I assume you'll take, you know, this was a sample survey from another community. You won't put Ferry in as a possible alternative way to get to-
Yes, this is just a sample.
I suppose there are a few people that might get in by kayak or something, but-
Other questions for Ms. Rita? Yes, sir, Mr. Roberts.
And I think it's probably addressed, but I just would like to reiterate my interest in acquiring basically an informational map, maybe with some kind of data that gives us specific information, maybe by, by either like points on the map or collected data points or something of concentration of use, to find out where the, where the bike journeys begin. So I was, I was pleased to see that you do have a method of getting it within a block or two of the homes of the individuals without asking them specifically for their addresses. But I think without this, this real pertinent data about where, where are the bikers living in our community and where are they going, but especially where do they live, I think that we don't have real information that could really help us. I'm really curious really to find out how many people in Scottswood use bikes to get into town to shop. Are they heading, you know, downtown, or are they heading down to South Phila Road? Because these, these kinds of patterns and from where to where are going to really help us plot the services that we need to provide. In all of the respects, I feel like the, the project, and I may be a little bit dubious about the whole bike plan at first, but I see its value, and if the, if our plan has grown to such a high quality that, that we might attain silver or gold status within a year or two, I think it really speaks well of the community. I do think it is a, an advantage for people who are interested in moving to the community to know this. So I appreciate whatever data you can give us, and I think that the, this information about pinpointing origins of, of travel is very important to us, so thank you for doing it.
Ms. Marlin.
Just a couple questions. Are you going to get actual counts of ridership on selected routes? I think Bill mentioned last week about setting up cameras. Is that part of the, but he didn't see it in, in your scope of services?
Because we are already doing that as part of the work that we do as the NPO for the urbanized area. Actually, right now, we are doing bicycle counts. We have specific machines that we use to count bikers in the community.
Is that on all, all parts of the network, or do you select street? I'm particularly interested in streets like comparing Goodwin Avenue, Race Street, Phila Road, Washington.
We are doing it, at this time, we are doing it on those streets that are going to be marked with new bike lanes or as bike routes, as part of the Serato School Grants, that we can compare the before and after, how many bikers-
So you're looking at Florida and Kinch.
Yes, we are doing Kinch, Washington, Florida, all those streets. And once we get those done, then we'll do the other major corridors.
And then, do you ever look at, compare streets with bike lanes versus ridership on streets without bike lanes?
We have done that. We haven't compared the data yet, because we are regularly doing counts on the community, and when we do counts, we count cars and bikes and pedestrians. Then we have that data.
And I looked through the survey, and it took me a while, but I did find the question that actually asked if people had a bicycle. I mean, I think we all assume that kids have bikes and that there are bikes in households, but I don't think we can make that assumption.
Exactly.
And so I'm glad that was on the survey. My other two questions relate to the survey. This, this thing was field-tested in San Jose, and they mentioned how they had a pretty low response rate when it was field-tested, and they had to budget money for follow-up postcards and mailings and that sort of thing. And I know you said you were going to follow up in various neighborhoods, but you don't have any money budgeted for anything other than that initial mailing. Are you assuming that any of the follow-up will not-
When they did it, they just did paper surveys. They didn't do the web at the same time. We are hoping, we really had a good experience working with the, the Urbana Free Library. We did a survey for them just this past month, and we sent the survey to all the people in their mailing list, and within two weeks, we got almost 2,000 responses to that survey. Then our hope is working with the Park District and the mailing list that they have, that we will be able to reach out to a lot of people, and then complemented with the paper survey, will have a really good response rate.
And just so we're not relying only on the web, because, you know, web access is also an issue as well.
Yeah, that's why we're doing both.
And the last thing is, when you were reviewing best practices, you were looking for cities, and I realize many of the cities with the highly-developed networks are like Portland and Chicago and Minneapolis, and that's not at all like Urbana. And you also mentioned looking for cities with grid layouts. Well, only part of Urbana has a grid layout, and my ward and ward, lots of Ward Six and parts of Ward Five in North Urbana, the streets aren't grids, and that, I think, affects, obviously, it affects the design.
That's why we are looking at different communities. We are looking at Madison. We are also looking at Michigan, on Michigan-
Ann Arbor.
Ann Arbor. We are looking at different communities.
The non-grid layout streets as well.
Yeah, and with universities the same size as us. Then that's why we selected different communities that are doing, are really progressive on bicycling planning.
Well, I do, I do support this, and I truly support the idea that we're, we will get actual data on who's using the system, where they're coming from, where they're going, and how we can better, I think the goal was to have the most appropriate network for all Urbana residents, so I'm looking forward to getting some actual data from this.
Councilman Brow.
Yeah, I appreciate all the extra information and the scope of, scope of the study. I have a few questions. So with the PABs survey, will that also be done in Champaign and the broader area too? Or-
No, the survey will be done in Urbana, but we have a question there asking about the zip code, just in case the person filling out the survey is from Champaign. We identify who is from Urbana and who is from Champaign.
Because we rarely get riders from all over on the bicycle network, coming from all directions.
Yeah.
I did, I, I put, I pulled up a map that was in, I think, last year's plan, or, I remember actually taking the online survey, or not last year, it's the 2008 map, and it showed you could enter where you, it was just, I think, asking about routes to work. So you could enter your original origin and, and where you go to work, and it only had like forty responses or something, but, you know, it's from all over. You can basically see that. And it, I think it reinforces our attention to the Complete Streets effort, so that like in 2011, we passed Complete Streets. I think Champaign's passed it, universities passed it, so really to, to just identify certain roads that we need to make safe for bicyclists, I think we need to keep that in mind for all roads. It doesn't mean we need lanes on all roads or sharrows on all roads, but at every intersection and to get across busy streets and stuff, we need to keep that in mind, that people are going from, from wherever to wherever, and that can always change, you know, depending on where people decide to live or work. So on the survey, I didn't, had a couple comments on, so it sounds like you'll have a random survey, basically with the mailed-out survey, and then probably not such a random survey from the Park District and the, the library mailing list. So will you, you'll mark those, so you'll have some way of determining which ones were returned, came from the random sample, and which ones-
Oh, yeah, we'll have that.
And then, when you mail them out, will they be for, for individuals or for households? If you have a household with four riders, will they all fill one out, or?
The survey will go to the household, and the person on the household, they can fill it as a family, or they can fill it individually. It will be really difficult for us to tell them how to do it, but the, the paper survey will go to the household, because that's the way that we do the random sampling.
Was there anything on the survey about number of riders? Or is it just, it's pretty much geared to one person?
One person, yeah.
Yeah, so they'd have to decide.
We'd put a letter in front and explain how they should fill it, but difficult for us to verify that.
And then, I guess, as far as trying to determine what census tract they came from or something, that you can pretty much plot the address for the random samples and the intersection for the non-random samples. For the significance, though, since the, to be significant in each census tract, the sample number, or the total number of population would just be three, four, or five thousand people, so you'll still need 300 or so for it to be significant from each track. So that would make your total sample four or five times what, what your current sampling strategy is. So it wouldn't really get to that significance level at the census tract level.
That would be really difficult to achieve.
Right. That'd, that'd cost a lot more money.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Final comments, Ms. Smythe.
But that's, that's what I was, that was what I was after earlier, was that, that with the web survey, maybe we can get significance at the census tract level, which I thought was really important. And then I, I do want to comment, the, the idea of getting gold-level certification next year, I think, is a real possibility, and, and part of that is, is something that, you know, really wasn't on my radar earlier, and it's thanks to our police chief- And it's thanks to our police chief and the work of Rebecca in going after enforcement and developing a program of alternative service, so to speak, by going to education. So we've got an enforcement and education program going that really adds to all of this. And that's really, I think, a huge jump up the ladder and gives us a great deal of potential. And it is not, it is not without precedent because there are communities that have gone from bronze to gold.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor. I'd ask for a vote on this issue. All in favor of moving this to a city council with approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? That motion passes. Thank you. We have an update, Urbana-Champaign Big Broadband update.
I guess I will start with the update regarding exploration of a legal structure for an, yeah. Can you hear me now? Just have to get closer. Just describing where we're at in terms of the likely legal structure which the entity will take, which will succeed and take on the next phase of the UC2B project. I do want to make a couple of apologies for typographical errors in my memo. And let me just point out, the second line in the first bullet point, I left out the B. It should be UC2B to avoid confusion. The sixth line, the second from the bottom, in the next bullet point, it should be 501, not 301 C4. And then finally, and probably most significantly, is the first line in the second full paragraph on the last page, the third to last word that says "not" should be deleted. Obviously, I did some editing without a final proof read. But with that said, at this point, the legal counsel, Chief Legal, or City Attorney Fred Stavens for Champaign and Lisa Power, Attorney for University of Illinois, and I have been kicking around, going around, analyzing various structures in consult with Holland and Knight, which was retained, large legal firm that has offices in Chicago and expertise in not-for-profit organizations, which were retaining to help us and guide us through this process. Originally, it was thought that, and the business plan suggests, that we would pursue a 501C3 not-for-profit entity. You have to remember that whether an organization is not-for-profit and whether it receives a tax designation as not-for-profit are two completely separate things. We can organize, the founders can organize UC2B as a not-for-profit, but that doesn't mean the IRS will approve it for not-for-profit status. In further discussions, everyone thought the 501C3 was, quote, "the gold standard for not-for-profits," failing to recognize that we have to look at what this entity is likely to be doing once it's up and running. And clearly, with the experience of what has occurred at Northern Illinois and the project going up in Rockford, the IRS does not look at this kind of activity very kindly as a 501C3 candidate. The reason is 501C3 has two components that the other exempt organizations do not have. One is, of course, the exemption from the paying of income tax for related business income, i.e. income from the activity of the entity and its charitable purpose. But 501C3 also allows donors who contribute to such organizations to deduct those donations from their corporate or their personal returns. IRS takes a very high level of scrutiny and at least in past experience, and having formed a few 501C3s and C4s in my day, 501C3s typically take anywhere from a year to 18 months to qualify. So that's one issue. The landscape is changing generally, as we know, in the not-for-profit applications to the government, federal government. We don't know which way the landscaping is shaped because they're still doing their investigations and nobody's coming up with any answers or resolutions to perceived problems. An alternative that was kicked around by Champaign's attorney, U of I's attorney, and myself, was 501C4 status. That does not provide for the component of deductibility of contributions by the organization. And it was determined that it was not very likely that the not-for-profit would in fact go out and seek donations as a C3 organization would do. It was also thought that, recognizing that certain grants have a requirement that the applicant be a C3 rather than some other, a C2, a C3, C4, all the way up to whatever. But they were, some grants require C3 status. It would be a relatively simple purpose with one, or a simple thing with one caveat, to create a C3 organization in connection with the C4 in the event such a grant is sought to be captured. The other problem with C5, or excuse me, with C3 designation, 501C3 designation, is UC2B will be, or some form of it, would be in competition with AT&amp;T and Comcast and whoever else provides broadband on a for-profit basis. Offering subscriptions, access to the service on a discounted basis, as we know from our experience looking at Carl, does not constitute a charitable purpose. If we offer the service for free or clearly below cost, then you're getting close. So it is not likely that a UC2B-type not-for-profit organization would qualify for a C3. We believe it would qualify for C4. Originally, Holland and Knight advised us it would take six to eight months to obtain a C4 designation, far shorter period of time. But as I suggest, that is up in the air. No one knows what the IRS is going to do. We don't even know if they've kind of put their own unannounced moratorium on reviewing the applications. Obviously, we are not going to include some kind of a political name like Republicans or Democrats for fiber or something like that, or Tea Party for fiber. So we don't know. We have to look at it. Now, there's further structure that has been discussed, which also seeks to take advantage of certain tax provisions. Obviously, if the, if the not-for-profit were to enter into a contract with an operator or a manager or a maintenance person or a person who would develop or expand the fiber rings and the connections, that person would pay the not-for-profit a fee, a license fee, some kind of a license fee. That probably, or a significant part of that would be construed, obviously as income, but it would be construed as unrelated business income. And that would be the majority of the not-for-profit's income, so it would be taxable. Not-for-profits are not 100% tax exempt. Only the revenue from their charitable purposes is tax exempt. And contracting out for somebody giving licenses to one or more entities to expand, operate, manage, whatever, the network is not a charitable purpose. So what we would do, or at least tentatively, we are recommending the creation of a for-profit entity, which would actually do the contracting with the operator, manager, build-out person or persons. That entity obviously will have, the for-profit will have its own expenses. Obviously, it can offset revenue with those expenses. And to the extent, at some point, we would hope, if it is going to generate a profit, those profits, because the not-for-profit would own the for-profit, those profits would be distributed to the not-for-profit in the form of dividends. And dividends are not classified as unrelated business income, and the money would be available for the not-for-profit. Now, the not-for-profit cannot make wholesale distributions or donations, if you want to call it that, on just some random basis to the three founding entities, Champaign, Urbana, and U of I. But it certainly could make donations to 501C3 entities like our social service agencies, which would tend to relieve some of the burden of government and hopefully one day increase the funding for those types of organizations. Money could be also donated to other types of projects to be defined, but we'd have to be, or the entity would have to be, the not-for-profit would have to be careful in those donations because they may not be treated as a charitable contribution. So that is the structure. Initially, it would be a not-for-profit that would own a for-profit. The for-profit would contract for the person or persons who would expand, manage, and operate the fiber. Now, in terms of the structure of the not-for-profit, originally, there was much discussion and much desire to have a six-person governing board, Board of Directors. And I voiced my very strong opposition to that for one primary reason. What happens if you have a deadlock with a 3-3 board? You know, and often, there are, not often, but there are examples of organizations that have been forced to be dissolved and go into receivership because boards are deadlocked. I had the experience of dealing with that, and it's not a pleasant process. I recommended two features, and they have been included in the draft bylaws, which are not engraved in stone as of yet. And that is to increase the board membership to nine. And in any significant vote, such as liquidation of the company, sale of the assets or any portion thereof, that at least one, well, let me back up. Each founder would appoint three board members to serve terms. And any major vote on the board would require the concurrence of at least one member from each of the appointing entities. So two entities couldn't theoretically steamroll another entity on the board. In terms of sunshine, I know that's been an issue, very much of an issue with our side of the discussions. The bylaws have a statement that meetings shall be open, board meetings shall be open, unless there's a necessity to close the meetings, such as talking about hiring salaries or real estate purchases and all. But the preferences for open meetings. If you include the Open Meetings Act by reference, you get into all the issues that we in the council here and Champaign and U of I have experienced. What about emails? What about text messages? What about public input? Not that anyone's against public input, but it's, you have to remember that the not-for-profit is a corporation. It is a theoretically, well, it is a private corporation. It's not a public corporation. And the founders will not be members. Not-for-profit corporations are, in Illinois, are not required to have members. There can't be shareholders because that's not the essence of a not-for-profit. So we can have a memberless not-for-profit, but the founders can appoint the directors and there can be removal of directors by the founders. If one of the founders wishes to pull out of the UC2B entity, whatever it's going to be called, then the directors would finish out their terms and the number of directors would collapse to six if there are two entities. If there's one entity left, I guess it would collapse to three. The founders, at least from my understanding, have expressed a desire not to be directly involved with the actual operation and management, but would rather have an entity, in this case, a for-profit entity, operate the UC2B. So that's where we're at. Same discussions are going on in Champaign. I presume a presentation at some point will be to their board. I'm not sure how the university handles that, whether they present to the chancellor or even the Board of Regents for the university on this issue. You have to understand that U of I has certain constraints in what they can be a participant in and a member of. And they're somewhat different than what municipalities can. So I'll turn it over to Bill DeJarnette for his part.
Let's jump forward to what's going on currently. The Phase Three contract will be opened at noon Friday, hopefully to get the last 56 anchors hooked up. For Urbana specifically, one of our biggest benefits will be, obviously, the landscape recycling facility, which will help us get credit card payments, security, online registering, a number of issues that'll be very beneficial to us organizationally. The, while that's going on, while Phase Three is, will be in process, and will need to wrap up in September because the grant will, the grant extension will run out, at the same time, we'll be moving forward on discussions with other entities that are interested in the build-out. We've met with a couple of them now, but it is our desire to get these things going, operating simultaneously so we can move forward very quickly. So as soon as Phase Three wraps up, we're much closer to working through that process. Charlie sits on that group, and we should have a timetable for the next meetings, I think, very quickly. That'll be, I think that's our biggest, that'll be interesting to us because as we move forward with the setup, that'll also tell us what kind of interest there is. So there's a number of methodologies out there, and a number of these companies have a different look on how they would do a build-out. Whether they would, whether they are mainly doing build-out, whether they want to build-out in operation. There's issues that are important to us, which is how open access would work through their organization, how they would, you know, what part of the contracting they would take over, support, billings, all of those pieces and how those would tie together for us. But I think that's the exciting part, is we can now get a few things working simultaneously and shorten our whole timeframe dramatically.
Questions? Ms. Marlin.
So when will we see what the options are for build-out? Or will we see that? Who makes that decision?
Charlie will. No. The, we're good, when we get done interviewing the entities, which are, we've had another one add, so I think there's five or six currently that are interested. The goal will be then to kind of shuffle them out a little bit and try to get some comparables put together, some apples, some oranges. I would see there's no reason why we wouldn't come back and discuss the general concepts of what they're presenting. There's a few entities currently that do not want to be named at all while they work through this process. Obviously, at some point in time, if we did, chose to go to negotiations, it's a different issue. But that would not preclude us from discussing concepts of how these build-outs might be done and how these organizations might interact and make sure that our expectations are consistent with what, you know, what our overall goals are. So I think in the next 90 days, I think that makes sense, Charlie? The next 90 days, I think we should, by then, have interviewed all of them, at least through one round or potentially two rounds.
Well, I've seen one, one set of, one proposal and no schedule for the rest.
I know.
I mean, what's happened to the others that were supposed to be coming and?
Well, as you probably know and have seen in the paper, Phase Two, One, Two, Two and a Half, and Three have taken precedence to make sure that the monies get spent and the grant, and all the grant money gets spent, and we get as much expansion in places we can. So that's kind of pushed everything back a little bit.
Mr. Jacobson.
So, is your model that there's going to be a single, a single entity that's going to do this entire build-out? Or will there be multiple entities that will do different sections of Champaign-Urbana?
I think that's a great, I mean, I think that's a great question. Part of what we're going to see is how these organizations would propose to do that, which means a timeframe. The open access issue clearly indicates how other entities may potentially interact with that. Uh... that. It's an important area for me, that obviously what you're not buying is a license to own Champagne, Urbana. You're providing the process by which you would support build-out, but that would not necessarily preclude other entities from trying to do build-out at the same time.
Ms. Marlin.
Well, what happened to gigabits squared?
Well, they're still, they're still in it, and they're still interested, and we have had a presentation by them. They are one of many. So we've gone from, from the potential that, that they may be the only place that might be interested in us, to one of a number of organizations that do show interest. You know, for all the press has been both good and bad, this is, this is, we're in an outstanding position for infrastructure. The rings are in place. We have very desirable cities. With inside the rings, we have a large university, not just, just the university, we have a large, major university. So we're seeing entities that are showing interest in us. Clearly, the upside of the time is, is Gigabit Squared has been doing a couple of other projects, and I think that is beneficial for the evaluation of them, because when we first discussed and talked with them, frankly, they really hadn't had much, and we have boots on the ground. So we'll be in a better position to look at them also.
Let me chime in with one further comment about the bids and all. Obviously, we don't know what the bids are going to look like. There are some entities, we've been told, that are interested in doing just the build-out. There are other entities who just want to operate the system once it's up and running, and yet, there are others who want to do both. So I guess the answer to the question will lie whenever they open the bids and start looking and analyzing, and as Bill indicated, creating a, some kind of a matrix so we can compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges. One other thing, Bill brought up the fact that the grant does expire at the end of September. Obviously, we will not get a C designation from the IRS by that date. We have to finalize the bylaws. We have to create the Articles of Incorporation for a not-for-profit. Just so you know, it takes probably less than a week to get a not-for-profit chartered in Illinois. You fill out the Articles of Incorporation, you ask for the Attorney General, and you file them with the Secretary of State, but you ask the Attorney General to look at them. If your purpose is one of a charitable nature, and we believe it will be, they will approve not-for-profits. So at least have an organization that can contract with whomever, or whomevers, whom's ever, the one or more people who we would contract with, I mean, who the not, the for-profit. And again, the for-profit, that can be created in about 18 seconds because you can do that online with little or no problem. So the, the structure without the tax designation can be there, and frankly, I don't think anyone is expecting anybody, except for maybe the operator or the build-out persons, to generate a profit. The for-profit is not anticipated to right away create a profit, and the not-for-profit is not really anticipated to receive any money from the for-profit in the immediate foreseeable future. So we have the time to submit to the IRS, but we can get the structure, the actual legal structure in place for a not-for-profit and a for-profit very quickly.
Mr. Roberts.
So have we completely abandoned any conversation that we once talked about, maybe nine months ago, about it being a utility?
I'm sorry, I lost the last piece.
About whether it, this, this, the broadband inner build-out could become a utility owned by the city. So is that conversation kind of really long gone? We've decided to go down a different path? We're not really talking about whether this might be an appropriate utility and owned completely by the city?
Well, I, I think the, given the fact that there's three entities in the process, first of all, I'll say no. But what I will say is, is we will get a better understanding of what that means to us once we've evaluated these proposals. That's, I mean, that's going to provide us a lot of information to get a better balance on whether that makes sense to us, what we would do, what they can do that we think we could do better, or where those costs would break out, and where it would be worthwhile to us to try to, to fill in that gap. But I think right now, what, what we need to do is, and what we plan on doing, is, is gather all that information we can get, match these things all up, and then I think we would see that if we needed to play in that, in that, in that sandlot, we would clearly understand what the expectations of us would be and how we would do that. So at this point, I would say, you know, never say never on anything. I think it's, we're still working through all the numbers. I don't think that's the general desire consensus of the other two entities, and that never has been.
Looking at a utility, obviously, if one founder were to become the utility, and let's say it's Urbana, obviously, there will be significant payback to the other entities that have contributed, you know, rights away, access, and, you know, other, other efforts to the project. And then, of course, there's a considerable cost in ramping up a utility and hiring people to run the utility, and this thing has to generate some revenue. It was recommended to us, not that we've, anyone's accepted the recommendation yet, but it was recommended in discussions with Holland and Knight that tended to steer, at least the lawyers, but we always throw monkey wrenches in everything, the lawyers away from the concept of utility, unless all three members want to be owners of the utility. U of I, I believe, cannot be that.
Ms. Marlin.
Just a couple more questions, just so I understand. So in three months, the grant will expire, and whatever build-out is, whatever initial build-out is going to be done, will have to be done. All the anchored institutions will be linked. Well, are they up and running now as far as the ones that are linked, they're actually using the network?
A number of them are right now, and matter of fact, I'm going to get to this a little bit later, but Urbana is in the process of taking over the billing for UC2B right now to reduce costs and overhead, since we can do it more efficiently. And so we're already billing about 800 to 1,000 organizations. So UC2B is up, it is running. There are a number of larger organizations that they're still tying together, finishing up. But Phase II and a half, part of that was to fill in a number of the anchors that moved kind of slowly on the decisions, a number of projects, and I'll use the mobile home projects as a good example. It took a long time for the owners who own multi-pieces of property to work through the issues of what it was going to take to do that. So a lot of that stuff came very late to the table, but those were not things we wanted to miss an opportunity to get.
So, so we're billing individuals or anchor institutions?
Both, both.
We're doing residential billing?
Sure.
Okay. And then, so then in three months, we can also expect to see the options for the candidates for the build-out?
I clearly, I clearly expect to. There's no, at this point in time, there's no reason not to. All the, all the operational stuff is, is in process. There is wrap-up that will never seem to end, seeding, restoration, that stuff never, never ends, but, but the, but the main crux of what we need to do and move forward now is to make sure we clearly understand what our options are. So that's the highest priority. So after Friday, and these, these bids go out, these bids get opened, and it gets, we go through the selection process, and then this has to be the biggest topic on the plate.
Mr. Jacobson.
So, maybe this is a little farther out in the future, but when can my initial $100 that I sent be applied to by, to tying me up?
Well, the discussion of some of the proposals, and this goes a couple different ways, is, you know, we've seen some accelerated plans, talking about a full buildup, full build-out in that two-to-three-year range. Obviously, there's some other issues that would impact that, and that's why the open access is important, is to get an understanding of is, is I may have a primary build-out, but I may have another organization that would really like to build out in an area at the same time. So making sure we understand how that would work, how that would be supported, how that playing field would be level, would be, would be critical. So from that perspective, you know, that could, that could accelerate dramatically, or it could extend out to four years. But the goal would be, if somebody wants to get in and do it, they want to get it done really fast, because that's, that's where their money is, not tied up in letting this thing drag on. It's get it in, get it built, and then get billing, or sell it.
Mrs. Smine.
Okay, one, real quick one for you, Jim. The, first, I may have missed it. Do you, do you have, do you know when we're going to get proposal to approve in terms of bylaws and structure?
No, because I don't know where Champagne or U of I is at. Right now, they are considering the draft that you have before you in terms of whether they are willing to support, and then Lisa, Fred, and I will convene on another telephone conference. If there are directives that you want me to take to that conference, I'm more than happy to share our wishes.
No, let's just get this thing rolling. You know, I think we should have, you know, I, I made the point, and I think Diane echoed it more than a year ago, that we should have had a general manager helping run this business.
There is no question about it.
Yeah, and so, so, you know, this is delaying us. So the sooner we get this done, the better. The other, the other concern has been open meeting, has been the whole issue of keeping this open, and, and I was hoping to pull it up here, but I can't find the, I should have written down the page number. As I did the Open Meetings Act training, there was a specific reference to the kind of structure that we have in here in terms of a not-for-profit being created and a for-profit entity. There was some, some language about that, and how the Open Meeting Act applies to those kinds of groups, except under certain provisions of independence.
I, I have seen nothing in the act that would apply to a private corporation, for-profit or not-for-profit.
But, but created by and controlled by the city. You know which one I'm talking about. You saw it. Yeah, so there is something in the training.
Well, there's, there's a question, the issue you raise is one of control, and if the city appoints the directors, the appointment process would certainly have to be conducted by each of the three entities in the Sunshine. The actual operation, at that point, the directors are free and they are.
They will be free and out of our control then, essentially.
Right.
Okay, so that creates this so that they can operate outside.
Yes.
Okay, that's, that, okay, yeah, that's.
They are fiduciaries.
Yeah, you understood it that way, too.
But not, not to the, they are fiduciaries, but not to the parties who appoint them. Their obligation is strictly to the entity they're appointed to, whatever UC2B or whatever it's called.
I guess, my only thing, my only point here is, let's, let's get this going, you know, it's really.
The settlement among the attorneys is the same. We cannot figure out how this thing has gotten this far, and for all of you who've been on the policy committees and the task, or the technology committees, you know, everyone should tip their hats to you because there should have been a general manager, and there should have been an entity created, at least to consult on the grant representing what we are now going to create. But we're here and we're moving. If, if I have your authority to say we like these bylaws, I will communicate that to, at least Fred and Lisa, and they're going to do what they're going to do with their respective entities.
So Ms. Emmons has recognized me to assume the chair, to recognize her.
Thank you. Thank you. I just have two things I'll add, and it'll be very quick. A, of course, I need to relook at the bylaws. There's a couple of things in there, but I'll send them offline to you directly. The other thing is, I'm really concerned about the process of using tax dollars. This initial impetus was very community-driven, and then preparing to turn it over to one of the same companies in this community or thereabout, corporations that really monopolize the industry currently. And I'm, I'm concerned about the applicants of those who would be running the public body that we've paid for in essence, and our tax dollars ultimately from the federal government is paid for, and not having it subject to open meetings, I'm concerned about that, too. So I just wanted to raise those issues at this point, and I'll send my others offline.
Would you like us to comment?
Since this was just an update, we don't have an item to move at this point. I thank you for your time and attention on both of those items. Thank you. Budget review and presentation, we have a rent-free library. I'm, I'm so grateful that you are still here sitting. I apologize that we haven't been able to figure this process out longer.
I made use of the time. I was editing the draft of the RPC transportation study while I sat.
Okay, good.
I got something done this evening. Okay, let's see if I can find, Jason said he would load this here. Let's see.
I like your seven slides already.
I know, but you know what? Even though there's only seven slides, and one's the cover picture, it still takes me a while to talk through it. All right, so where is my way to open this up to a slide thing? Slide, there we go. All right, I am, okay, we're, now, I know I'm making a mistake here because you're not supposed to hand out things while you're talking, because the people aren't going to listen to you, but in the interest of saving some time, so we're through. I get to that during part of my presentation later on. They're just some pieces that are takeaways for you. Is this on? Okay, so I'm Deborah Lasek, for those who don't know me. I hear only usually once a year, unlike all the other department heads that you see. I've been the director at the library for six years, but was the associate director for 24 years before that, and a little bit also before that. So hopefully, my institutional memory will serve to be able to answer any of your questions. Okay, where is your page down at? Okay, a little overview of library operations. So in the budget that Bill has in these pages, this is what you see. There's a little more than a $3.5 million budget for the library. This excludes the city I M R F and Social Security payment, which is something else he referred to, but this is the dollar amount that gets passed to the library board to manage for the rest of the year. Our revenues are about 89% local property tax. That's fairly typical of a public library because enacting legislation for public libraries are such that municipalities levy a tax on themselves in order to fund a library. So that's fairly typical. Our expenses are 71% wages and benefits. This, again, is a service organization. Most of your money is in your staffing. This, again, works from the 3.5 million figure and excludes the city I M R F and Social Security, which in some ways bumps it further. 18% of our expenses are in centralized costs, and in the city budget pages, those are the things like travel and training, building, utility, contractual costs, and 11% is in materials, the collections that people access in the library. Our staffing's approximately 90 employees, 75% that I say are in direct public service. I wrote "public service," and I realize everybody does public service because the people who process the books that come in, if they have a backlog, you don't have very good public service. So, but 75% of our staffing is really out in the public at the service desks. That 90 employees translates into 49.38 FTE in this coming year. This is actually down from what Bill has in his, he should be happy to hear that it's down from what he has in there by 1 FTE. In this past year, I experimented with, we had a maintenance person retire, and I moved that, the money from the 1 FTE into contractual cleaning, and so we have a, one reduction in the FTE there. So we have 22, 22 full-time, and as you can see, the majority of our staff is in part-time. This serves a couple of purposes. One, we don't staff the same amount of people every hour, so we staff to the peaks in library use. So our busiest times are late afternoon through early to mid-evening, and Saturdays and Sundays. So we're proportionally staffed a higher amount at those times. So part-time staffing allows us to have more people present when we're busy, or and less people present when we're not. That line at the bottom that says, I guess, if you, do you get to see my presentation up there? No? You all see them? Okay. So the line at the bottom, the part-time hourly substitute, again, most of our part-time staff then are hired with the expectation that they also can pick up extra hours. So you might be hired for 20, but if somebody's sick or on vacation, you can pick up extra substitute hours. That, again, helps us to stay at full staffing, but basically still just be using regular base wages. The other way that it actually benefits employees, so you have to realize that to benefit them, you have to sort of right-fit the position. When you have a part-time job, you want to look for somebody who wants a part-time job, so you're not sort of forcing somebody into a job that isn't desirable for them. But it does fit people in many circumstances. But it does fit people in many circumstances. Because we're busy across evenings and weekends, and really, if you work at a library, you have to take for granted that you work evenings and weekends. But say, for instance, you took the circulation desk. If on Saturday or Sunday, you needed six or seven employees to staff that, if you had only six or seven employees in that department, those people would have to work every single Saturday and Sunday. You double that, and you have halftime people, and you have 12 or 14 employees, now they have the benefit of only working every other Saturday and Sunday, which is still not a great schedule. But that is really a large reason why you see so many part-time employees in the libraries, in order to create halfway reasonable schedules, and at the same time, be able to staff differently to the different peaks. Library use statistics, these are typical ways libraries measure their use, door count, items checked out, questions asked, computer sessions, programs, and online catalog searches. The fiscal year '12 statistics are accurate. The fiscal year '13, I took off of 10 months and extrapolated. They seem low to me, and that might be because June is a really heavy month, a very high month, and so some of that will come up. Only a little perplexed by the door count, because for the last few years, we've been very close to 500,000. I'm very fond of saying that we bring almost half a million people to the downtown. There were some low months in the winter that are inexplicable to me at this point. Computer sessions seem to go down a little bit, but we also, the amount of time in a session seems to extend. Our current average is about 70 hours per, 70 minutes per session is the typical, the typical average. Okay, so the library budget, so here's the finances. So it's the status quo budget that everyone else in all the other departments has presented to you, so no increase, is a flat budget. We were, the same as other departments, told to incorporate longevity steps, and for the library this year, that amounted to a little less than 1% increase in our wages. And health insurance, the health insurance increase for us was a 7% increase. This works for us, because we typically come in underfunded on, underspent on this line. But I will note, and I noted this last year, that both in fiscal year '13 and '14, the amount that the city asks the library to take in its health insurance line is less than it would actually be required if all eligible employees took health insurance. Because we always seem to come under this line, it's not a terrible concern, but it's one of those things that you can't probably play that forever. The other thing that our health insurance line does is that it funds the separation payments for the RHS plan, the Health Savings Retirement Plan. So typically, what we've done in the past, when we instituted that plan, following the city's example, and we were a few years behind them on that, what we did is we said, the leftover money in the health insurance line, which we know tends to be there every year, we will put into a fund balance for payouts for separation payments. And then everything else that's underspent in the budget will go into the general fund balance. So that line's kind of holding to purposes, health insurance and funding the separation payments. So, again, it feels safe historically. We've always underspent, we've always underspent this line. But it isn't funded quite, it isn't funded to the degree that would be required if everybody took the library's insurance. Okay, so then, one of the pieces you got was the five-year financial plan. Actually, it's just the executive summary. The full report is on our website at urbanafreelibrary.org, and the full report is 10 pages, and gives you background on each of those areas, and the progress we've made to date, and the steps that are left. It includes, on your first page, both operating expenses, and on the second page, the capital non-recurring expenses. I will note that this was approved by the library board prior to the CARL announcement. I hesitated to even bring it, but this was a very heavy planning year for the library, and the board did, I mean, these are significant things that we've really just put on hold for a long time, and we're hoping this year we are coming out of things, and we aren't at this point. So really, all those things you see on the front page, that say, hope fiscal year 2014 from the operating budget is, they realize those are suspended requests. On the second page, the RFID proposal was already underway, and that's with the mix of library funds and VERF, but everything else, basically, is on hold. So I'll come back to Bill's comments back a few weeks ago about how the city contributes extra to the library budget, and he's right, he's right. But I wasn't here to defend this. It is true, the city pays, and I mean, his reference was just that they pay a portion of the library's operating budget. And I, and it is true, but I do think it's important to clarify that what they're paying is not just some arbitrary percentage. They're paying the IMREF and the social security costs for the library payroll, so it actually amounts to the library pensions. So this payment is made by the city, and so when you see that, the budget that's passed to the library board to manage, it does not include that payment, the city does that directly. If you transfer that payment to the library, and it is a legitimate cost of running the library, if you transfer it, what it amounts to is raising the library tax rate in order to incorporate it, unless you're asking us to take a cut elsewhere in our budget to compensate for it, which is truthfully, I think, larger than the whole CARL loss. So I don't think you'd be asking that. But if you transfer it to the library, it just raises our tax rate. It doesn't actually lower the impact on the public. It just means you're coping with it, or we're coping with it, but it doesn't really lower the effect that it would have on the public. We do have a very high library tax rate, and of course, it's because we're, like every other institution in Urbana, suffering by the fact that there's not a lot of tax-exempt property, and not a lot of commercial developments. So that, basically, the burden of the library services falls on the residential property tax, which makes it a high one. I'll reference a little bit Bill's comment that Champaign Public Library took this over about 10 years ago from their city. And there's some differences that developed in the cities on how they handle the tax rates. So in our case, we come once a year, and we present a budget to you the same way the other departments do, and will have to justify if we want to increase an FTE, or initiate a new service, and ask for that extra money. If you approve that, you approve the amount, and then you go backwards and figure out what rate it takes to deliver that amount of dollars that you wanted to approve. In Champaign's case, what happened is, going along back, they had a 42-cent tax rate, and the city basically just gave them their 42-cent tax rate. So in all those booming years of development in Champaign, with both commercial and residential developments, they got their 42-cent tax rate, and it kept bringing in, with increasing values, increasing values, it kept really bringing in a lot of money. And so at some point, the city said to them, gee, your tax rate brings in plenty, you should be able to take this over, and they did. Now, of course, their 42-cent tax rate is causing them trouble right now, because their property values are decreasing. But that's kind of the different history of how they got to where they are, and why we're still where we are. And it's not an unreasonable expectation that that happened. It is a library expense, but unless you're asking us to cut someplace else to absorb it, you're actually just taking it from one place and putting it in the other, and it still remains an effect on the public. The other place that the library contributes is, there's a library set aside, and the city VERF in the current balance is a little over $160,000. This began when Charlie Smythe was first on our library board, because he came and was amazed that we didn't have any mechanism for saving for long-term expenses that you could never handle in your operating budget. And the biggest example of the library is clearly an automation migration, which happens every so many years. So when the library board approached the city about setting aside a amount, the city actually just preferred to set aside an amount within their own VERF, so that they could manage and control it. But they understood it to be reasonable to expect that you had to plan for major purchases. In the library's case, this is set aside for major equipment, we don't have any vehicles. So this was used once in fiscal year 2006. It happened after, actually, it was the fall of 2005. We opened our new building in spring of 2005, but the HVAC system from the 1975 edition wasn't replaced. And we had a couple of major controllers, I think, of some kind, condensers maybe, condensing units go out in the fall. So even though I think the VERF was meant for equipment, not capital, like building projects, we didn't see any need really soon for our money for library migration, and said to the city, go ahead and use that. And I think they had to use that in addition to some other places in their budget to deal with the HVAC situation. And then it was used again, but we returned it, just in fiscal year '12, when we finally did do our major automation migration. This was the joint project with Champaign, and we did a 1/3, 2/3 split, which is fairly typical of the city cooperative projects. They were bringing $250,000 to it, and we were bringing $125,000 to it. So we did spend that money, and that money from the VERF was transferred to us to pay those bills. At the end of the year, though, when Ron was doing the audit, it turned out that the library was in a very good position with fund balance, and that's probably because we were in those couple of years when we were all underspending, and we were underspending, carefully doing the same things the other departments were doing, delaying hiring, and not filling positions, and everything else. So he said we were in better fund balance than the city was, and asked us to return it, saying it would still be set aside for the library, but, so we did. We gave back the 126 that we had spent for the automation, because we'd underspent by enough to cover it. I think we also returned our cost-of-living increase that year, the one that was done mid-year. And so now, the next plan for it is for the Security Gates and Self-Check Equipment, that project I mentioned that was in the five-year plan that's already underway. So I thought it would help either fiscal year '13 or '14, but right now, we're beginning the project, but the beginning costs are things I'm covering in our budget for the tagging costs for the collection, and the equipment won't actually probably hit till So the strategic planning process, that's the pretty picture brochure you have in front of you. This was recently completed. The strategic plan covers fiscal year '14 to '16. Our last one was the library long-range plan from 2006 to 2011. We had a gap there with no planning. This happened primarily because we had two department head vacancies, and it's kind of hard to do your strategic planning without the head of the adult department and the children's department. So we put it off a year, and then we had the automation migration, which overwhelmed us. So we went for a few years without any direction. So this was an exciting thing to get to, because it'd been put off for a long time. We hired, this is one of the few times the library board has hired consultants, and this has turned, has turned out to be, I think, a very wise decision. I think it gave us the outside impetus we needed to be bolder about our directions. So we hired Sandra Nelsa. I went to a public library association, what they call Boot Camp. It happens every August. It's a week-long planning series, and they really push you for a week. And Sandra is one of the co-facilitators, and has been for the years. They've been offering this, and she's also is the editor of sort of their results series, set of planning manuals. Her clients include the Gates Foundation, and Unork Public, and small libraries as well. So we were actually fortunate to have her come in. She's very expert in this process, and so this is the process the library board chose to choose, to follow. It's the Public Library Association Planning Process. And there's a whole book on it, and there's a whole book on implementation, but I'm going to call out two things that I think are significant about their process. So one is that it starts by saying that you assume that excellence is defined locally. So that means not every library needs to look the same, and every library should be responding to its community. As a result, there's a big emphasis in this project on community participation, and we had 16 participants from the community, and it was actually a really wonderful experience. I was very grateful to have been involved in it. The second thing is that the end of the process, when you get through your priorities, assumes that reallocation of existing resources is what you use to achieve your goals. So your resources are your facilities, your collections, your technology, and staff. It's fairly often in planning processes to go, oh, now we have this new initiative, so now we can't do this until we have a bigger building, or we have another staff position. And you're kind of, and this process has been through many revisions, this book. And so I think they're reacting to 21st century reality right now, and basically assume that if you're going to do something, you can do it, you just need to reallocate your resources. So when Bill started his mantra about you either have to be more efficient, or you do less, like, I'm prepared. I've been hearing this since February, when this consultant came on board, and actually so has our whole staff, been hearing that when you come down to the end and you're reallocating, you basically, if you have lots of choices, and you're spreading all those resources, you're doing everything maybe somewhat well, or, in our case, I think really well, because we're a good library. But if you look at the things that matter the most to your community, and put proportionally more of your resources there, you're going to actually have a bigger bang for your buck. And so you may be giving up things that you value, that you think you're doing, that you are doing that are very good, but you're still going to try to shift gradually to the things that make the most difference. So again, you have a little glossy brochure there, but the full plan is on our website. The full plan, the piece that you have has the library service priorities, and then under each library service priority, it has some goals. If you go to the full plan, under each goal, there are objectives, and the objectives are the things where we have measurements, like how we're going to check our progress. So this process was really interesting. In the fall, we started by trying to line up people for our committee, and we were looking for a broad representation of the community, and not just somebody who says, oh, I represent this, but somebody who's connected to organizations, so that they kind of have the ear in the conversations with a lot of people. So we were looking for anything from health, mental health, business, development, seniors, teens, parents, I mean, just kind of planning, city planning. So we looked for a very broad community, and as we were getting commitments and agreements from people, I started plotting them on a map to make sure we had the neighborhoods covered as well. And we did a really excellent job, I think, of representing the neighborhoods. And it was, it was a very good process, and the people who were involved felt it was a good process, were very complimentary about the process. So the way it worked is Sandra came in in February, and she gave a couple-hour presentation to the library staff and board, just to tell us what we were in for. She spent the next day, a five-hour day, with this committee. They spent most of that meeting talking about Urbana as a community, not about the library. They spent most of their time just talking about what do they want Urbana to be like? 10 years from now, what do you want this community to feel like? Then they finally went on to saying, okay, now that you have kind of what you're looking for, how do you think the library's positioned to help deliver that vision? Then she introduced to them 18 sort of typical library services, and said, which of these are you interested, which of these do you think has the most ability to deliver your vision? So they looked at them, and they narrowed it down to 11. They weren't required to try to get this down to really high priorities, but just which things did they think were worth pursuing. So those 11, they passed off to the library board and staff. Now, the next week, we had our one-day-a-year, we have a library staff in service, we close on President's Day, and usually, they get this as an in-service day, where they have speakers in. Unfortunately, they had to work that day. We spent the entire day analyzing, doing SWOT analysis and pros and cons for the committee on the 11 service responses that they passed to us. We passed those, and the board added to that at their next meeting. So we passed that back to them in March, and then the committee looked at those, and with the extra input, chose their priorities. And this time, they actually did have to select, you know, given that you want your resources to do the most, narrow it down, and actually give them to us back in the order you want. So what you see is what came back from the committee. So the very first thing was visit a comfortable space. It's physical and virtual spaces, but this committee actually put a very high emphasis on physical space. They wanted meeting rooms, and more study space, and more gathering space, and they felt like they hear all the time from people, that they like coming to the library, they like meeting people at the library, and it's a, it's a place where everybody feels comfortable. And I think that's true, and I think it's one of the things you see, is there's not as much segmentation in a public library as you find in a lot of organizations. So I think that's first. The second thing they chose was stimulate imagination, reading, viewing, and listening for pleasure. This is basically collections. The third was create young readers. This is early literacy, birth to age five. We were a little surprised at first, because in some of their sifting of the other service responses, sometimes they dropped something off that we do, and we do well, but they felt that other places did it in town. And this is one where they came back, and they said, you know, there's a big effort for the next year, and yes, lots of places are doing it, but there can't be enough of this, and that actually, the library should be involved in this effort. And I think the important thing is to be involved with the collaboration of the things that are going on in town, and make sure that we're doing the piece that fits us, and we're not all doing the same thing over and over. This is already probably a strength for us, probably 75% of our programming is in the children's services department, and most of that is with preschool. The next thing they chose was connect to the online world. This is internet access. It's not actually, we help people find information, but actually, it's just providing the computers and the bandwidth. And with UC2B, of course, we're an anchor institution, and you can see by those statistics that we have lots of public computer sessions in our, and Bill actually pulled us into the city's Fiber Link back in fiscal year 2009, because our amount of use is so heavy. But 2007, we were practically screaming, we were on a T1 line. And it took him two years, but he got us there. If we were still waiting, we would be in really trouble. The fifth thing they chose was express creativity, and this one is kind of a one that's on the edge for libraries, and it's a new thing. It's exciting to have something that's not a standard. This is create and share content. And though there were adults on the committee that were interested in this, and they knew other people who would be, they really wanted the emphasis to be on teens. I don't know if any of you have heard of U-Media in Chicago. It's really sort of a high-tech lab, you do audio, you do video, and it's a way to get teens involved in learning technology at the same time that they're doing fun things. We've actually started down this path a little bit last year. We have some collaborations with...
Ms. Lissack, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you just for a second? Just because of time's sake, and our board has been here since 5:30, we have two more presentations.
Okay.
If we could ask for the final highlights on this, so that I can turn it over to the council.
You're really down to it. So that's the last page, is the creativity, and the last priority was the local history and genealogy, which is our archives.
Are there questions for, say your last name again?
Lissack.
Lissack, thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. Liz Sac, thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. We have finance department presentation acts. Mr. Dejeanette. Oh, Ms. Clark is going to start the timer for you.
What'd be the first time?
There you go, Bill.
All right, here we go. We're not even going to do that for you. We don't have to do that. I just got to cut. There we go. Am I backwards already? All right. Very quickly, finance department. What you're seeing before you is the original layout in the budget document. I'm going to hit a few highlights, but most of the stuff is in the budget document. So if you feel, you can always jump in with questions you'd like. Six major areas: admin, parking permits, licenses, financial services, information services, the public records, police records management, arms, and the Urbana Public Television PEG. Administration, obviously, financial planning, budgeting, reporting, monitor revenues, expenditures, compliance, investments, insurance, departmental oversight. Parking permits and licenses. Some of you have probably met our parking ticket people. About over a hundred thousand separate processing events. They handle the payments, maintain records for the rental spaces, obviously, issue and account for all permits and licenses the city issues. We're five thousand of those. I think the interesting part is, is the outstanding job they do, considering no one comes to that front counter because they want to be there. So the interaction and how they handle that is critical. Financial services, down in the garden area, six thousand vendor payments, six thousand payroll transactions. They disperse the payrolls, related expenses, file all the supporting documentation, bill and collect for the rental registrations, recycle tax billings. We also do data processing and financial services support for the library, the Park District, Cunningham Township, on a cost reimbursement basis. They use our payroll system and our general ledger system. We collect and account for all the revenues, including all our locally imposed taxes, food, beverage, hotel motel, local MFT, deal with the deposit of the revenues, bill and collect for all the other receivables, such as damaged city property, which are really fun to try to collect, and other small items like that. Information services, specs, bids, it's all support, software, hardware for all city departments, PC servers, network, AS400 system, represent the city with outside agencies regarding connectivity and support issues. And I just want to say that we have an outstanding working relationship with the county, not the least of which, we did our first major fiber project between the courthouse, city building, public works, building, and then to Brookins. And I think the fact that we're in between their two places really improved the relationship. But nonetheless, it's been a great relationship, and we've gotten a lot of mileage from that. We're one of the few places left that still does in-house software development. All our financial systems, such as general ledger payroll, billing systems, parking tickets, is all done in-house. We also provide technical support for accounting and payroll support for the Park District, the library, and the township. And then we actually do onsite technical support for the Park District. It was one of those things where they're not a good size. They have their own IT person, but they need the support. So we were able to contract for that and get the right person there for the right time, and it works out very well. And we provide the supervision for UP-TV, and we're going to, right now, we're involved with bringing up the UCDB billing system. We'll probably send out the bills tomorrow. So, arms. Cooperative venture between Urbana-Champaign University of Illinois. Arms is a multi-agency computerized police record system programmed and maintained at the city of Urbana. That's based on the original system that we designed in the nineteen-eighties. Other agencies joined in the nineties. We integrate data from MetCad dispatch, with that entered from officers, clerks, handles evidence tagging, on-scene report writing, case management, state reporting, statistical analysis, a ton of other subsystems. The report writing, we're moving to the web to minimize maintenance impacts, and designed to produce document transfer to the State's Attorney's Office to reduce data entry at the county level. That's all automatically built in, and the transfers are in place. UP-TV PEG. Award-winning UP-TV has added many features. Some of you may have enjoyed some of these: live streaming, video on demand, twenty-four hour programming, YouTube access, online membership and equipment checkout, training on cameras, video editing. Community outreach has been outstanding with programs, working with Urbana School District students. That took some time to get up, and that has worked out extremely well. We plan on having a large, I didn't want to do any part of this, because we want to spend some time and do it right, but we'd like to do a large UP-TV presentation, maybe in July or August, so you can kind of get a taste of what all the different things they do and provide. If you look at the amount of programming we do compared to any of the other local, local channels, we produce tremendous amount of local programming. All right. Some modifications with help with the mayor. We're looking to do some changes within the department. Probably the, one of the biggest changes is we're moving parking enforcement from police to finance. Going to try to get the individuals that are on the street a little closer to the people that have to interact with the day-to-day aspects of what they do and what they touch. It just ties the support a little better, and we can kind of get the information tied a little bit tighter. We're going to add a new account clerk downstairs. One of my goals is, UCDB billing's a good example, but there's a number of billings, as you've seen, the storm sewer, sanitary sewer, that's done out of house. We'd like to bring that back in-house. We think there's not only some savings, mostly there's some savings. So we'd like to leverage that, especially when sending the same bills to the same houses. We can clearly return some revenue back to the cities for that. I'm looking to possibly make a change, so that one of my PC techs is a PC network tech, and the reason for that is, and I'll get into that, is, let me go forward. Well, I'll just walk through it. Primary goals: provide an upward growth path for a number of positions, improve our cross-training, decrease compartmentalization, and blend the overall responsibilities. We tend to have an upstairs-downstairs. We need to tie that together better. Review the procedures for operational relevance, prioritize all tasks first from a global, then a local perspective. We want to shorten the communication loop for parking, the account clerk, billing and house, the PC network upgrade, provide network support, cross-training. We would like to reduce poaching and free up the network coordinator for more time to program. We have outstanding techs. They're highly trained. We're a multi-disciplined environment, and other organizations like to hire our people away from us. So I need a way to tie them together here a little, a little longer. So a little upward mobility, and frankly, the classic issue, when you run a lean department, you're a car wreck away from a disaster. Well, we've got too many car wrecks, so we'd like to close that loop. Office supervisor, expansion of the responsibility, provide oversight over all daily operations. Change will help enhance achievement of our operational goals. Deputy comptroller, be nice to get another CPA in the shop with knowledge of governmental accounting, automated financial systems. Currently, the accounting supervisor performs most of these duties, but we'd like to try to tie that a little bit together. We've never really had a very good succession process in place. We'd like to improve that. IS supervisor, something dear to everybody's hearts. Primary focus at this point in time is special projects, current operational support. Over time, we look to change to more direct supervision of the day-to-day operations, but as we are a programming environment, it takes a while to get your legs under it for that, and they need to know the systems and the subsystems. Financial impact, I believe I can do this change and be expense neutral, including adding the account clerk position. Moving, notwithstanding moving the parking enforcement will involve changing light item expenditures, police from police to finance. That's it. Any questions? No questions? I can't talk faster.
Questions?
Just one.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
I'm just sort of wondering, and it may not be that your department's going to do this, but we've talked about having a review of facility, as far as like, you know, how many, how many people can work in the offices? Are we adequate? Do we have adequate room? I've heard people mention transferring or trying to combine township offices into other offices. I don't see we have any room for that. Is that a topic that's coming up with you as far as future planning, or is that your responsibility?
Yeah, I can, I can go two flavors on this. One is specifically, my two PC techs work out of a storage room, which is fine. It's a very nice storage room, and we now have heat in it, so it's outstanding. And there's stuffs there, so it works out well. But the reality is, is organizationally, we need a facility study. But we need to, my personal belief, and I'll be truthful, it's my personal belief, we need to make sure that we clearly understand what we want ourselves before we go out and hire a consultant to tell us what we want. Otherwise, I think we run the risk of getting somebody else's proposal, they scratch that name out, scratch the Urbana name on it, hand it to us, and say, congratulations, you now have a facility study. Do we have real needs? Absolutely. Number of areas are very cramped. We're looking, this account clerk's a good example, not sure exactly which hallway they'll work in. But it's going to take some time to work through what we want our organization to look like, and how we need to house it, how we are available to the public, how the public needs to reach us, what pieces need to be close together, what pieces could be satellite out a little bit. But we need to make those decisions first and understand that. Then, when you bring a consultant in, you can help direct them to areas that are important to you, and make sure that those get addressed. Because so often, you don't have that clearly in mind. You go out, they provide you all this stuff, and then you start the learning process. We need the learning process upfront. We clearly need to understand what our expectations are, and, like I said, how we work within our own community. Then, then a facility study has real value to you. But I think there's no, there's no quick fix. There's no quick answer to that. There are some inexpensive solutions that may make some adjustments. But right now, what we've got, the classic is, is, well, we want more room. We need more space. We want to add a person. We want to change this around. And that feature creep will always drive the need for greater space. And I would like to make sure that we clearly understand how to use the existing space we have efficiently.
Thank you.
And if that's, take one department, move them out of this one, put them into someplace else, and flip-flop them, okay, well, so be it. But those are analysis that I think we need to organizationally run with ourselves, get feedback from council, get feedback from the public, how do they work with us, what is our expectations of this. Then, like I said, then you outreach, and then I, then I think a facility study may have real value to you. But I also don't think it will be as expensive, because it'll be much more focused.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Dejeanette. And we will ask for our city clerk.
Well, the first thing I can tell you is that the city clerk's office has only three employees. Our flow chart would show the city clerk at the top, deputy clerk, and department secretary. We've only had an opportunity within the last year to hire our department secretary, and one of the things that we were looking for in the clerk's office was to be more available to the many different diversities that we have in our community. And so we hired a young lady that is fluent in speaking Spanish, in hopes that she not only would be able to help communicate some of the issues that people have, such as the FOIA requests, or how to maneuver through this city, who are not real up on their English speaking. And she's done an excellent job with that face-to-face and on the phone when we have Spanish-speaking individuals in our community to come forward. Our budget in the city clerk's office is primarily contractual. We don't do a lot of things. The only thing that we actually have much control over is our supplies budget and stuff like that, and we try to stay within the realm that we have there. Our comptroller has done an excellent job in seeing to it that we have what we need to meet our contractual needs for this here city. So just to say that we're going to be working harder to make sure that those who come to the city or call the city, since the city clerk's office is generally the first place that they stop, is met with respect and dignity, which is what we do right now. We're going to continue to do those things. Now, with Mr. Dejeanette talking about the space needs and all that, we really need some more space in the city clerk's office. Files are falling down on me. I have no place for my permanent records. I need to get them in a place that would be secure, such as if we were to have a fire in this building, all of the permanent records that we have here would be lost, because they're not in a protected agency, so, or in a protected space. So since we're giving out space needs, I think that that would be really nice to have. And so when you get ready to do that, think about us, because we need it, and in order to preserve the history of the city of Urbana, you need it, okay? Thank you very much. That's it for the clerk's office.
Thank you, Ms. Phyllis. I'll take Mr. Jacobson, and then Ms. Marlin.
Phyllis, in the case of an office like yours, that just accumulates records, and I assume that you, almost nothing gets thrown away, that stuff just piles up and up and up and up. At what point should we think about digitizing those records, and, and only permanently storing maybe a digital copy onsite and a digital copy somewhere, somewhere else?
Well, they do that pretty much now, but there are some records that are to be kept through infinity. You cannot get rid of them, period. Anything that we get through within the clerk's office that we have to destroy, we have to go through the state archives to get permission to do so. So it's not just something that we can open up a file and say, okay, we're going to purge these things out and get rid of them. We have a destruction schedule with every department in the city saying what you can destroy, and how many years you have to hold it before you can destroy it. So it's not something that we can just willy-nilly go in and start throwing away.
Thank you, Ms. Marlin.
That answered part of my question. The other part was, if you had to find a place to store records that currently are falling down on you in your office, what do cities do? I mean, where, what's an acceptable storage, off-site storage facility?
Well, most of the cities that, the clerks that I've talked to have like vaulted areas, a vault where they store their permanent records, and these vaults are fireproof. And that's something that we don't have. And I know that that's really expensive, so, you know, that's something I'm not sure when the city's going to be able to do anything like that. But it would be nice to have at least the place where the permanent records are stored in something that would be protected if we were to have a fire.
No other comments. Thank you, city clerk.
You're welcome.
And the final item is item twelve, of which I'll, I think, turn it over to Mr. Jacobson, and I'll step away.
Okay. No, I think, and, and maybe, maybe we should hear from staff first, if you have anything else to, if you have anything new to say, or
No, I don't.
Exciting, any words of inspiration?
I'm here to take notes and to remind that I believe next week is when it should be finalized.
Yes. So, so I think that, so I've seen input from Diane, and Dennis, and Bill, and the mayor, and Charlie, you have, okay, and, and Charlie has kindly agreed to get with me a little later this week to massage these numbers into the final recommendation that we'll bring for a total of two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. I understand that Ms. Ammons won't submit because she's conflicted, and I guess, Mike, you're philosophically conflicted. Okay. So, okay. So, so we'll, the, so, so we'll, we'll, yeah, so, so I expect that we can bring, we, yeah, what do you think, Charlie? Can we send over the weekend by email, so that people will find if we meet later this week? So, so it will appear in your, in your mailboxes, probably on Friday or Saturday, for you to ponder and consider approving or modifying, I guess, on, on Monday. But it will represent, it will represent everybody's consensus. That is, so, you know, neither Charlie nor I will have, our, our recommendations will not have any more weight than anybody else's recommendations. So I, I'm guessing that you probably won't want to change it too much, except in ways that are impossible by having more money. Got to print? Okay. There, that being the last, is that the last item?
Yeah, I wanted to ask what people thought of the letter that's on your desk dated June tenth. We strongly urge the city councils of both Champaign and Urbana to ban as soon as possible assault-style weapons in our communities. That was also in an email I think many of us got, and references the state, state action.
Yeah, Mayor?
Lieutenant Governor Sheila Simon was saying there's some kind of a window for local governments to do this, but we would have to put it on a committee agenda, and then a council then a council agenda. We, you know, we have a process. We can't just do something instantaneously. So I'm not sure what the window is, but we should find that out first.
Other questions or comments? Charlie, would you, if you'd like to hear?
Sure.
So my first reaction when I saw my email and read the paper this morning was that we have a lot on our plate. And I really understand that assault weapons are important, but I think one of the big questions is would a municipal assault weapons ban? I mean, I guess Chief Connolly isn't here, but I, oh, I'm sorry. So Chief, one of the things that really occurred to me is that one of the things we'd have to consider is input from you on whether this is, you know, what, in practical terms, what are the enforcement implications of such a ban in a single community? And, you know, how would we expect this to actually work? Is it, would it be symbolic or would it really, really have an impact on public safety? I mean, one of the things I'd note is that already in the state legislation, nobody's allowed to have a gun in here, nobody's allowed to have a gun in schools, nobody's allowed to have a gun on campus. There are actually lots of, you know, so, so I don't know. And of course, it's not fair to ask you for an opinion on that right off the top of your head, but I would definitely think in my mind that we'd need input from you in considering this. Yeah, okay, so, yes, Diane.
According to the newspaper, there's a 10-day window of opportunity.
Mr. Roberts?
And I, when I first came to Urbana, I noted that the city was a nuclear-free zone. And if they're able to do that, perhaps assault rifles are a lot easier.
Charlie, take this a second. I have to respond to that. Charlie, Dennis, I guarantee you assault rifles will be a lot harder than banning nuclear weapons. People will get a lot more excited about assault rifles than nuclear weapons.
Mike?
My only comment would be that gun laws are totally ineffective for people who don't break the law to begin with. Gun laws are somewhat effective for people who don't care about the law. I mean, I, you know, I'm sure that Chief Connolly can expand upon that more for us, but he can take a pistol away from a criminal just as easily as he can take an assault rifle away from a criminal without a ban on assault rifles. So you're just, this would be making a local law, helping to make a patchwork quilt of local laws that really does nothing ultimately. Unless the chief tells me that it's a great tool in his belt, I just, I don't see why we would pursue something like this with all we have on our plate.
I was going to ask Charlie to recognize me, but Charlie doesn't want to take the chair. He instead wants me to adjourn the meeting and unless there's any other, unless there are any other, I will, I can't resist a comment because, you know, we've got so much on our plate. We'd have this room full to overflowing with people on both sides of this issue and it probably won't save as many lives nearly as challenging Carl's nonprofit status.